Alright.
Alright, so let's call the meeting order if we establish a form.
Yeah. Commissioner Lu.
President.
Commissioner Wieden.
Here.
Commissioner Van Rees.
Here.
Commissioner Hecht.
Here.
Chair Hecht.
Commissioner Delkew.
Yeah.
And the records show that Commissioner Texler and he might have not arrived yet and may be absent. Okay, we have a form?
Excellent. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
I'm going to introduce myself and then I'll speak to the agenda later. I'm Shani Kleinhaus, I'm the environmental advocate for Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. There's awards, so you can have for if any of you have questions for me on any issues later. Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society has quite a few residents here in Los Altos. I myself don't live in Los Altos, I'm on the Parks and Recreation Commission in Palo Alto, which is where I live. Palo Alto is now looking at bird safety design, dark sky, creek ordinances. Mountain view is looking at dark sky right now, they already have some bird safety measures. And I've been working throughout the valley for a very long time, so even San Jose has some bird safety and dark sky ordinances. So I'll talk about that later, but I thought I'll introduce myself. I'm a biologist and ecologist by training at my PhD at UC Davis. And have been working in advocacy on a large variety of open space and urban ecology issues since then. Started working on bird collisions in the 90s when ESRI had some conferences on collision with structures like buildings and wires and other things like that. This has been an interest for a very long time and I'll talk more about it later, thank you.
Can you have your comments for items on the agenda?
What item do you want to, make sure we keep an eye out, so now we kind of know what you're going to want to talk on?
Dark sky.
Dark sky as well, okay, cool.
Okay, should we move on to the minutes from last meeting? Any comments or?
One minor correction on page four at the top. Second line, it says request that to fills instead of fill out. Just to say, so other than that, have any question?
I'll move acceptance to the minute. I'll second that.
Is everyone approved?
Yes. The first topic is the tree city, maybe we can move that to the end in the hope that Rashina attends? Are we allowed to do that?
So you guys will need to reorg the agenda then. Can't really just take it out of turn, so you're just going to have to send it. I think the difference is on the agenda.
Okay, I will ask that we move number two to just move it to the end and everything else up. So effectively, tree city becomes item number six.
Okay.
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Does anyone approve?
She just got it.
Okay, hi guys.
Hello.
Rashina, you just moved your agenda. Item number three is, I believe Tanya is going to present some building electric. Building or planning commission where it comes from.
The building official, and so I'm going to relay it the best that I can. If there are further questions, we can, Veronica can come to the next meeting. So basically, this is the Q1 data, so January to March. And the way this is structured is that I have the electric permits on the first table and then the gas permits on the second table. So I'll just go through the numbers and for heat pumps, so furnaces and AC, we have 18 electric permits that we had since the beginning of the year. And for heat pump water heaters, we had 14 electric new, new electric permits. For solar, we had 60. For EV chargers, we had 30. And so for the detached ADUs and the single-family dwellings, we don't have all the data yet because those projects have not been fully approved. So therefore, it's hard to say what they're going to do at the end, we can only speculate, so we can't give out that information right now. But some of the, out of the data set, I did see that there was five fully electric detached ADUs. And just to reiterate, the reach code is that the detached ADUs have to be electric, but can have exceptions for gas stove and fireplaces. So that means that five of them did not take the exception. I don't have, like I mentioned, I don't have that data for single-family dwellings, but it is the same rule. That single-family dwellings, new construction can take the exception for gas stoves and for fireplaces.
And so on the ADUs, you're saying five did not take the exception?
But they're fully electric.
They're fully electric, but what, how many did take the exception?
So I don't have that data.
That's what you're saying.
We have to come back to that.
So Tanya, to clarify, this is only residential? And these are single-family homes, so do we include units in building, residential buildings?
So this is single-family dwellings and detached ADUs?
Okay, so single-family homes, not the apartments.
No. This is for this?
Calendar year.
Yeah.
So I'll just somewhat expand, that's because, and I can just confirm, we haven't issued any, so essentially what this is, is this is building permit issuance, because that's where Tanya is kind of showing that there's kind of a nuance, because people can essentially push back about electrification right now because of the Berkeley decision. And we would have to kind of honor it or reconcile whether or not we have to allow it one way or another. And so we have not issued any building permits in Q1 of '24 for multifamily housing, so that's why you wouldn't even see a line item for it yet.
And then just what you just, so we are not even, we're not enforcing even our first reach codes that we passed. While we, if somebody requests an exception, we're just providing it per launch, pretty much.
That, that is what we would have to do.
It's a 21 way, right?
Correct, and that is actually what, whether or not they are publishing it or not, that is what the neighboring jurisdictions are doing, so.
And that's what the attorneys have told us to do?
Yeah. It's essentially the, the honor, not offer method, so.
So if this capturing new, totally new construction, everything, you know, or, so like if somebody is building a new home, or is it broken out too that they're getting heat pump permit? Or is it, you understand my, like?
All heat pump permits.
Okay, so that was in cold?
Yes, it's all heat pump permits, all heat pump, heat pump water heater permits, all solar permits, all EV chargers, but then only the detached AD, only the new detached ADUs and new single-family dwellments.
And the EV chargers are only private EV chargers, right? Like the ones you, I bet, yeah.
Not to mention all the exceptions, are they only for fireplace and cooking, or are people asking for exceptions for HVAC as well? Was that even allowed, or?
So just Veronica touch on that at all?
For new construction, the exception is only for, the 2020 reach code exception is only for gas and fireplaces. For new construction.
That's where they're not giving exceptions for heat pumps or heat pump water heaters, or?
No, but so a newly constructed residential, single-family home, a newly constructed detached ADU has the only exceptions are the two that I just mentioned, fireplace and gas. There is no exceptions for existing buildings that are changing out an old heat pump or changing out an old furnace or changing. So that's just, we're just showing you the voluntary, I'm just showing you the voluntary permits that have been done. There's no exception, there's no requirements for existing buildings. So the first two on the electric side are all voluntary. So those are per appliance, and I guess that, but those are per appliance, and then the last two rows are the entire building. But then within that building, they can have those two appliances as exceptions.
It's a bit confused now, because you just said without enforcing the first reach code. But then you say the only exception that for gas fireplaces and stoves, which was in the first reach code. So new buildings in the reach code that was passed in 2020 and enforced of the early 2021, I believe, it's all electric buildings with the exception of gas fireplaces and gas stoves. Right, that's what we have right now.
Being enforced in the third.
That's this one we're enforcing still, for new buildings.
Because all the ADUs were supposed to be all electric.
Right, and I think that's what they're saying.
The exception for ADUs as well. Also that's, the, the rule was that they're all electric with the exception of those two appliances. Attached ADUs had no exceptions, so I did not include those in there.
And we are not giving exceptions for heat pumps and heat pump water heaters, for new builds, sorry.
Correct.
If those are still being put in, those are required.
Correct.
Yeah, so the key, the, the, the table on the right reflects actually not new buildings, but all of this is just replacement of older equipment, or upgrading an older equipment in that case, correct?
Correct, and then the bottom two are, the bottom two rows reflect who took the exception, which I don't have that data right now.
Yeah.
Would be interesting to see the data for 2023, the whole year data, actually, at some point. Would be interesting to see at a time when, well, I guess it's similar to what we're doing right now, I guess, so. But I think for the whole year would be interesting, you probably can break it down a bit more, you have more data would be, give us a pretty good idea of how we did in 2023, and we can start comparing each year as we move forward. Especially if we do something with regards to accelerating electrification, which we are obviously in the process of doing.
Quarterly would be great, I don't know how hard it is to break out, but if we could kind of keep a trend, then we can see how we're doing. Kind of keep us prepared, that would be nice, right?
So just so you know, the, the way that this data is extracted is like for the last two rows on each table, for the most part, we have to go through the plan set and find the information, so it is time intensive right now. I have been learning a little bit more about this process, so I'm trying to think of solutions or maybe things we can put into the application, but right now it is very time intensive for the building.
Just the last two lines or even the first?
Well, the first, the solar and EVs are not, but the first two heat pumps, HVAC water heaters, heat pump water heaters. Again, I, I think everyone's aware of how data works and people are the ones inputting data, so those also to get accurate data set, or the accurate numbers, you have to go through each of the note, all of the notes for those. I went through all of the notes for like, all that data, all those data, all that data. So yeah, it is basically manual if we want to be accurate.
Just again, a point of clarification, sorry I'm a bit slow yesterday, but single SFD, single-family dwellings. These are new buildings, new houses. And all the other ones are not new houses, I guess, right? So all the other data that you have do not reflect what happened in your homes?
Yes, so.
So like for example, EV chargers, it was not part of a new building or a new home, it's someone that wanted to install an EV charger in their home.
It could have been, yeah, but we, so all of these, something I didn't ask it the right way. Explain it again a little better, so all of these are just per appliance, the permit is per appliance.
Okay, so it's not like a, a single-family home where you request a permit for your family home, and then it's either all-electric or it's combination of mixed or hybrid type?
So, and then these are new construction, like that, the, the reach code is based off the new construction requirement? But then they also, yes, because of the exception, you have to look at the, you have to go one layer in and see if they have the fireplace and the stove.
Right, okay.
Which, which, is, that's the data I didn't, wasn't able to get.
When somebody's applying for gas permit, is there any information handed to them about heat pump water heater rebates or anything? And do we know, do we have any sense of, there's a kind of like emergency, I need to replace my water heater right now because it's leaking? That doesn't get captured?
So for the most part, from what I hear, the heat pump water heaters are usually done in like last minute when the, the, the water heater goes out. And at this time, I, I'm not sure how the building division like captures that. If that's just like anecdotal that the building official knows, it's not like? It's not part of the process where we ask a question, is this an emergency, to my knowledge? So we are not giving out any handouts in that case. For the other, the other permits, when it gets, the, the way it was explained to me is that when it gets, by the time it gets to the building division, it's already, you know, decided for the most part that they're going to go through that. So we have been discussing ways, and this is what we would want to explore in the subcommittee is, and even SBCE has been like trying to explore, is where we can find an opportunity during that process that doesn't impact the, the staff as well.
Yeah. I think, I think it's, the, the other question also was about, do we have an idea of how long it takes to get a permit for each of these, or is that very similar between forms? Water heaters, solar, gas, or electric, or whatever, is there a difference? In the, you know, by the time you, you, you ask for the permit, how long does it take to get the permit? Is there a difference between the different types of appliances, is there a difference between gas versus electric appliances?
Veronica gave that presentation about the, and I think the solar and the heat pump water heaters are over-the-counter permits? So they take a max of two days. I'm not sure about the, the other ones, like the heat, the HVAC and yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Like, is that usually with the whole? No, yeah, I'm not sure.
They go, usually HVAC requires a little bit more versus, solar's come, become so streamlined, especially now that they're not as heavy of units like they used to be 10 years ago. HVAC's a little bit different, like if there has to be like a first test and everything, so sometimes they have to kind of take that into account if someone's doing like a roof-mounted unit. There's just some kind of go back and forth, it is still fairly streamlined. I would definitely say it's less than five business days. It just depends on, you know, who's kind of coming to submit or pull the permit. I would say the one biggest thing though is because a lot of people in town utilize like a company, and the company will use a permit runner. Sometimes when you look at like data submission to data issuance, that's really indicative of how long it took to actually get the permit, because a lot of times it'll essentially sit in the queue with the permit runner, because they all create like an online account, so then they have to pay for it before we obviously give you the permit. So sometimes they almost kind of like badge it by city where it's like, oh, on Tuesdays every week, we pull all of our permits, you know, in Los Altos. And then on Wednesdays, we do Palo Alto, so it's kind of like they, it's how they kind of group their, almost like regions a little bit. Beyond that, so I mean, really the, the issuance of things for the standalone ones are, are pretty quick, to be quite honest. I will just say, because I can run a report, there's, there's two of them that are very actually simple to run. So in 2023, we did 69 heat pump permits, and then in solar, in 2023, we did 460. So, now the 460, the one thing that I will at least say is that that can be initial deployment, or that can be what we do see a lot of times, is people will add on once they have a little bit, you know, more if they want to kind of add to the capacity. So that's, that's something that we are obviously kind of aware of, that kind of somewhat might skew those numbers, but still a lot of those are initial deployments.
Let's see if I should.
And solar, just so you also know too, is that will never, we will never miss solar numbers because those have to be, it's just a part of the building code, it has to be a separate submital. There can ever be, even though solar is required for new, brand-new homes, they, it's always considered a deferred, so there's always a standalone for solar, where the other kind of are considered smaller appliances in general. Those are just, you know, ancillary to the structure. But solar, because of PG&E requirements, they require it to be standalone for whatever weird reason on the backend.
Yeah, and I will say that for our goals and like kind of where we're going and what direction we're heading. I don't have the numbers right now, but SVE, SBCE provided like a year-end review. Tom, you and I talked about that, I don't know if you, if anyone got it or saw that. They said they provided it to customers, but it did show, you know, what member agencies, which one, like which customers took advantage of the rebates, which ones are using their resources, and Los Altos is one of the highest, if not the highest. So, you know, residents are aware and they are, you know, using those resources, which means we're on the right track, I think.
Any other questions or comments?
Can you send this to?
If we could get a quarterly update and then maybe get 2023 data, I don't know if it's for next meeting, but whenever you're ready, Tanya.
Something we, Electrification Subcommittee. We can review that. Work with and review that or request that review. Might be easier work with Veronica to drive that.
So I will at least just add is, at the next Environmental Commission meeting, we are going to bring you guys an item to discuss about essentially electrification permit fees. And that, the 2023 data is going to be somewhat of a little bit of a basis of how I'm going to make a, what I think is a really good recommendation that the commission for consideration in regards to being able to essentially earmark hopefully funds reoccurring for cap implementation, which I think we all know over the last two years has been kind of like the biggest kind of roadblock, is not have money specifically earmarked because of all the other competing factors of things going on in the city. And so kind of I've already discussed internally a little bit of a creative solution, so we're going to come back at the next meeting with some of that, because the council did just adopt a new comprehensive fee ordinance for all of our permits throughout the city, and so they did also at that time directly bring to the Environmental Commission a discussion about essentially how can we fiscally incentivize the deployment of electrification? And also some just sustainable, you know, related permits in general, I don't want to say it's just electrification, because some of it has a little bit of a different angle, so. We'll bring that and we can give you the 23 data at that time. Maybe not 100% comprehensive, like Tanya was saying about the, looking at each individual, single-family structure that's been built, because we do issue a lot of single-family permits throughout the year, but at least the standalone permits that we do know about, just to kind of help orient the conversation.
Great, I think that'll be good, and, and, and the only thing, Tanya, that might be helpful, if it's too hard to manually go through all the data, maybe take a sample, and just say of the 15 houses I looked at in January, here's the number that were given exceptions on, whatever, that, that would always be directionally helpful. Right inside of, yeah. Okay, next topic is dark sky ordinance, which is a deck, Shao Peng and I prepared, right? So as you remember, last time, we presented the overview of what we are thinking belongs in a dark sky light ordinance and a bird safety ordinance. That we discussed it briefly, the feedback that I remember here was mostly on the residential, including, or trying to include the residential segment in the bird safety, which we had excluded. And then we also sent the deck out for specific feedback, of which two commissioners gave us very specific feedback. We also shared it once again with some key contacts in the city who gave us some specific feedback, and I'll go through that right now and give you our responses or our thoughts, I should say, on each of those points. And at the end, we will decide what the GMS. So quickly going through the feedback we received, so first from the Environmental Commission, you can go to the next slide, Tanya. On the dark sky, one of you raised the fact that there were flashing traffic signs and, and, and it read, and, and their read was that our ordinance precluded that. Actually, to be clear, we aren't trying to preclude safety items, so if there is an exception required for traffic lights, it, it should be in the ordinance, and if not, we'll clarify that. We don't want to do anything that impacts safety, and, and we mean to exclude and make exceptions for all that. Someone else made the comment that city compliance should be five years, because we, because we had provided a 10-year window for city compliance. Obviously, quicker would be better in every case, I think the fact is when I've spoken with city maintenance a couple of times, they, again, the city does not have a good feel for what city lights we own and don't own, who controls what. It's based on a very informal, it, it seems like operation is based on a very informal agreement with PG&E who owns most of the lighting. They know they need to do an inventory of the lighting, it's one of the few things we don't have an inventory for in the city. And until we do that, I, I don't feel good saying they should get it done in five years. I think, I, I don't think, I certainly couldn't, and I don't think the city can make an estimate of what that would cost, which would cause a problem for the council to approve that, I think. And, and the other point I would make is that our neighboring cities have, or at least the, the few we've looked at have 10-year exceptions for city lighting because of budgetary reasons mostly. Because as you upgrade city lighting, it costs a paramount. The other, you want to ask a question? Why don't we ask, after I get to this point, with that, on this point, let's go ahead and ask questions. And then the other point I would make is that there is a city pilot right now, both for downtown and the city plaza parking, because that was a concern of mine, and, and somebody the, the police captain had raised the plaza lighting as well. But it seems like the, the lights they are trying to choose are dark sky compliant, I'm not exactly sure, because I haven't picked out the light. They might be a little cold, so they're 3,000 Kelvin instead of 2,700 Kelvin, but that's, I think they can adjust that and that may be okay, but they are censored, they are remotely controlled, they're, and they're solar. So at least the initial pilot lights they are doing, I think based on a grant, I think are dark sky compliant in these two big areas. Um, so at least the initial pilot lights they are doing, but I think based on a grant, I think are dark sky compliant in these two big areas. Both the city plaza parking and uh hopefully downtown as well. Um, so, uh, you know, again, uh, I think the ask was five years, we put ten years, I think we should stick with ten years, but happy to discuss them, we can do that right now. Any questions or thoughts on that?
So, I mean, I I I put that one in there, um, and I think the the reason why I was doing it is because we're asking commercials. To be five years, right? And I think as a city, we should set the example, if we we should be able to do the same, right? So that's, that's what's behind that idea. Uh, I understand budgetary issues, I understand also, we don't know what we own in terms of city life, the lamppost specifically. Maybe there is a happy medium in there, maybe there is, you do it for city buildings and the lights outside the city buildings, which I think we should be owning. And then for the lamppost and all that stuff, we can put that on pause until we have a better understanding of who is in charge of what. But that's just a. Just a, an idea.
I'm, I'm sorry, but doesn't public comment usually come before commission?
Oh, it does, I thought it came after.
So let's, you should just give your presentation, and then there can be clarifying questions, and then public comment, and then discussion. Public comment can come before questions if.
Got it, okay, sorry, um. All right, uh, the um. Other question uh was about the six-month compliance, uh, and and just to be clear. Uh, this, there, there is a six-month compliance term in the ordinance we're proposing, but that is only for lighting that. People have already put in or recently put in, that can comply, so in other words, you have. Uh, landscape lighting that can be turned off at eleven, but you're not, you have six months to set the timer, so it's turned off at eleven. It is, again, it it is only in- in applicable to lighting that comply that exists today. Uh, and and so that should comply within six months. It doesn't apply to anything else, other than lighting that can, that can comply. Um, and then the other comment uh was also that the the five-minute motion detection lag seemed too long. Um, what I would say is that's kind of a standard that cities have approved, and it's also in the suggested ordinance. Uh, so, no, no one is considered anything five minutes, and that's why we put five minutes, and I kind of think we should stick with five minutes. Um, on bird safety, the over, uh, again, during the presentation here, and then the few pieces of feedback I received. Were that it should apply, some, we under- a lot of, most of you understood the reasons for accepting residential. Uh, that uh maybe for large windows or glass railings walls, we should include it for residential. Um, what I would say is most neighboring cities have excluded residential, uh, with the exception of Cupertino, I believe. Um, and uh, so I think I I came up with a nice hybrid, uh, which is in the next slide, just. On the bird safety and residential. So, so what I did is, uh, there, I think there are some easy, uh. Residential modifications we can make, and specifically, uh, that you will avoid funneling flight paths to buildings. Uh, so residential buildings, uh, or trees, make tree paths that line up right against the window, those should be precluded. We should not allow highly reflective glass or highly transparent glass, those are, those are glass types that birds are attracted to. Um, and and then I think it's okay to include that we should not have any glass skyways, walkways, balconies, or freestanding walls on the res- on the residential site. Uh, the proposed ordinance, obviously, we had uses that's those same terms on the commercial side, and I think we can use those terms. On the residential side as well. What I'm not, what I haven't included are the requirement that the residents has used treated glass on second stories or first stories. Um, and and the feedback we received is that glass is not as readily available as commercial glass. Uh, it's more made-to-order, special order glass, and it is more expensive. Uh, probably more expensive uh than standard residential windows. So I thought this might be a, a nice hybrid, so we are including some bird taking measures with this addition. Uh, for the residential segment, the only thing we aren't doing is including specific glass treatments for homes. Right, next slide. Um, from the city staff, again, we we went back, uh, the police did get back to us, uh, she gave a very detailed response. Um, she wants to make sure there's no police department involvement in enforcement, we made it clear that this is not a police department issue, and they shouldn't take any. Any enforcement on this. They were concerned about parking plaza lighting, uh, she had heard anecdotally, I think right now, the parking plaza lighting goes off at eleven. Not positive, but she she implied it did, and she had heard that some of the businesses were worried about that, or had concerns about that. Uh, but in talking to the maintenance uh department who is running up the pilot program. Uh, those lights will be motion censored, the new lights can be motion censored. Uh, and and mo- they are modifiable remotely via app, so. Um, and of course, if it is a, if it is a safety issue, it can be accepted under the ordinance as well. So I think we've addressed that issue. Um, she was also, or the the police were also concerned about good color and lumens for street lighting. Only anecdotally, she was familiar with the fact that Berkeley had put in a dark sky requirement, and they had had some feedback. Uh, that these, the street lighting was too light, effectively too low. And she wanted to make sure we didn't do something along those lines, I looked up online, I couldn't find any report about that. Um, uh, so I'm not sure what they are referring to. But uh, of course, there are exceptions for safety, if if the police determine that's a safety issue, we will make an exception for it. Uh, and as well, I do think this drives the requirement that we should have this reviewed at the end of the day by a consultant. Uh, so they can check the, make sure we have the typical requirements right, which I think we do. Uh, but it would be good to get a review by consultants anyway. Um, the police also asked, is there bird safety requirements for existing buildings, and the answer is no, if the building is built. Uh, there is no requirement for compliance over time unless there's a significant remodel. Uh, or significant replacement. On the fire side, there were no major concerns uh by the fire department. Their main concern on lighting is internal exit lighting, and I don't think that uh is impacted by dark sky. Uh, city maintenance, I I've gone through this, uh, but I think, uh, but quickly, it's it's really difficult for them to evaluate the cost of. Upgrading uh or coming into compliance with dark skies because of their lack of lighting inventory. And because of the informal relationship we have with PG&E. I I think the obvious thing that drives is hopefully someday in the short term, we can get a inventory of lighting, they know they need it. Uh, and it would be very helpful overall, I think. Um, and I also mentioned they have this current pilot program, which appears to comply with dark skies. Uh, planning, uh, again, very helpful feedback, but um, and and with some experience in dark sky and and the enforcement of it. Through board enforcement, code enforcement. Um, their main feedback was this really needs to be an ordinance, and then it also needs to be built into the building code. If we wanna have it enforced uh well. And I think we've addressed all that, or we can address all that in the, in the ordinance and the codes that we're proposing. Next. Um, so I I think the next steps, um, after we go through clarifying questions and public comment. Um, would we would vote to move forward or not on the proposed ordinance? We would propose we need to engage a consultants to review it technically. Uh, and potentially to reach out to the commercial developer and builder. Uh, segments of the market to educate them and get their feedback. Uh, we would also then move forward with our outreach program, which Shao Peng has been working on outlining. Uh, with public meetings, surveys, web, email, and outreach, and then get this scheduled with the city council, get our recommendations scheduled with the city council. I think that is it, uh, now I believe I can ask for clarifying questions.
Can I find questions?
Let's take clarifying questions first, because that might impact what the public says. Any questions?
You have to go back, I'm sorry, I don't know, can't, um, which one? The one that was, the written did about uh flight paths, yeah. I'm just there.
One more.
Um, question for Nick, if if this uh. It to to how you read the feasibility, I guess, of this um addition of the flight paths along buildings, is that. How how does it seem enforceable as read currently?
Yeah, so I mean, it's really kind of the, just the first sentence that talks about the funneling of the flight path, the rest of it is kind of just the. Prescriptive general compliance of what um bird safe design actually in keeps, so I kind of look at this as. Almost like five bullet points of, you know, how to achieve bird safe design, just one to kind of orient the conversation. Um, I think for something, like specifically, if we're gonna talk about like the funneling of flight paths and everything. Um, we would talk to the consultants specifically about something like that, um, because I can tell you, we have. A a planner that is a registered landscape architect, so when we talk about like the trees and like how they orient the trees. Well, we have someone that's um very well versed in that, uh, but when it comes to anything with uh wildlife, we don't have anybody on staff on. Any city department, so, um, yeah, we would have to lean in on that to see how that's kind of. The most streamlined approach um in order to have that um be a part of like prescriptive compliance, so.
Any other questions, clarifying questions?
Right on, what's next, when you say we should vote on whether to move on or not? What are we voting on?
The uh, the ordinance we presented last time, and it's actually in the appendix here. Um, so we reviewed it last time at the last meeting, uh, and then it was sent out as well. Um, but it's, it's a two-part dark sky, bird safety ordinance.
So, but there is the changes, are the only, the only change?
Change is the, that uh residential piece of the.
Uh, my understanding is the last time was just sort of a, an outline of what would be in the ordinance, it's not the ordinance language.
No, and and in fact, I think the direction was not, was for me not to prepare the ordinance language, that we, they, we would provide it to the staff, and they would. Prepare the ordinance, and we would interface with them, but.
It's an outline of the criteria that we're suggesting be included.
Yes, exactly.
But still fundamentally, the VC has the option to say, is, is this really something that you all think is right for. An ordinance at this time? Not to say it's uh never, it's just, is it, is it ready now, or do we have other priorities that still actually focus? That's kind of what the council has kind of given over open-ended.
Okay, uh, city, uh, public comment? Do you have any public comment?
Uh, where do I stand, here? I'm Jim Fenton, I'm a Los Altos resident, and um, you may have gotten my written comment that I submitted by email. Um, there was no context for the uh commissioner's uh responses that were in. In the agenda uh packet, and uh I did get a clarification that that it was responding to things that were in. The last meeting, which I was able to get from YouTube and screenshot, but it would have been very nice to have that. Published and available to the public directly, rather than just have to get it off the YouTube. In any case, um, I think the, I think the criteria there are off to a very good start, I have a few, a few comments. Um, one is, and and I think this is in the, in part two, it talks about, there's a, a comment says controlled by motion. Sensors or be extinguished by eleven P M or when people are no longer present. It it it's not clear to me right now whether that means that, can I have a a light next to my front door that's on? When there's nobody there before eleven P M. Um, I I I hope that we can, because I.
Yeah, okay, I'm I'm a responder.
But but it it's kind of those details, the ands and ors that 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 uh, that weren't, weren't entirely clear, and I'm sure when it's written up. As an, as an ordinance, we can look at it in more detail. Uh, there was a comment about string lighting, a limit of forty-two lumens, I, I looked at some typical string lights, and they all seem to be like eighty lumens. So I'm wondering if that's. There's a comment about uh holiday lighting between October and January, concerned that, you know, Christmas lights and things like that would be. Um, outlawed, but um. There are also, you know, a lot of lights that I see for Moon or New Year and so forth. And we need to make sure that the uh criteria that we've got there are. Uh, sensitive to other cultures that might wanna put up lights for their own seasons. Um, and uh, that was about it, thank you.
Um, so, uh, just uh responding quickly to some of those points, I think I got them all, uh, the door light, yes, certainly you can have a door light. Uh, or a light by your door on until eleven, um, that should not be an issue, and the 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 intent is not to outlaw that. String lights, eighty lumens versus forty-two, I can't um. Technically speak to that, um, I will take a look at it, we will take a look at it, and we'll make sure that that's right, and that the market meets what we are putting in the ordinance. We meet what the market has, uh, we'll make sure some things available, so we'll look at that. Uh, holiday lights, I think you're, you're right, clearly, we have to be sensitive to all the holidays and not just specific ones, not just the traditional ones. Uh, and we will make sure that the ordinance uh is clear on that as well.
Again, my name is Jenny Kleinhaus, I'm the environmental advocate for Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. And today I'm here also on behalf of the Sierra Club Loma Prieta chapter, because they had something else to be at. Um, so, it's very uh reassuring to see how much work you've done on this, and that the bird safe design is included. I'm quite impressed, uh, like, uh, the previous speaker, I did not have context, I missed the last meeting. And so I wasn't sure what's going on, and that, and I, I'm asking to, maybe you can send me that stuff, you have my contact information. And so that we can provide more specific comments. Uh, string lighting is a, an issue that every city has struggled with. Uh, and one of the things I'll say today, and I can look at it more as you move forward, is that at least. Uh, in the migration season, the lights should be off, so it does allow lighting in the season of, uh, like. Over Thanksgiving and Christmas and whatever other holidays, Hanukkah, but it does. Uh, try not to get into the seasons that the migration occurs. Um, there was a study just this week that showed that. And I'm gonna give you a little bit of science here, but they uh show that the previous estimates of mortality of birds in the United States. Due to bird pollution or an underestimate, they actually did like experiments and and monitored, and they now think that. Um, it's between a billion and a half to five billion birds every year die because of collision in the United States. Um, this adds to studies that show that light attracts birds, and that they change their migration routes. And are concentrated in more lit areas, so light pollution, more birds, more birds eating the windows. Um, and there's another study that was published in the, by the UN. Um, World's migratory species report, they published in February, and they show that. Uh, forty-four percent of all migratory species that they're monitoring are experiencing a severe decline. And twenty-two percent are threatened with extinction, so we have a real crisis. Uh, in terms of what's happening to our biodiversity and birds, and not only birds. So I would love to see this more as it develops, uh, but a few, a few questions, a few. So I would love to see this more as it develops, but a few, a few questions, a few comments about housing and large windows or other things. Some cities, like your proposed prohibits certain architectural structures that are extremely hazardous, so. Even sometimes they require this kind of architectural elements to be retrofitted with framing, other kinds of visual cues. Or it's other cities just say, don't do it, and that's what's to put in, and that's probably a better, a better way to deal with it, but the most. In residential areas, one of the most hazardous situations is where you have, where the bird can see a way to fly through the house. And so if you have two windows or an atrium or some kind of a structure where the bird can see its way from, from one side to the other, they will collide, and those areas probably. Need either to not exist or to have some level of retrofitting, which can be difficult. I get a lot of calls from architects, because I've been working on it for so long, and they ask what to do, and the American Bird Conservancy does have a product database. Usually the recommendation is film, if you are not willing to avoid that very hazardous. Structure or situation, then put film or something like that, so the birds will have a visual cue that there is something there. But I think that is something to consider, and I'm looking forward to commenting on what you are producing and would love to bring it to Palata, because the same thing is coming up. Right now over there, and if you're looking for consultants, I know some, so feel free to reach out, there's not many who can do this well. But there are some, not necessarily in California, but they can work anywhere, I suppose, and yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your comment, thank you. Okay, now we are on to commission discussions. So any, any comments?
About five versus ten, I mean, does it make sense to do in between, like seven years or?
Well, I suppose, I suppose we can do anything.
You know, you know, there's a reasonable horizon for when that can happen, but still.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I agree with Bruno, like, you know, if we're requiring a commercial, do five, the city should be on board in five. The only issue is the, I think the, the lighting budget for the city is much larger than it would be for any individual commercial entity, especially the ones in Los Alamos. So I think it's a much harder task and number to get your arms around. That was my feeling, and I still feel that way, having talked to the maintenance guy a couple, few times. So I, I, I don't, I think, you know, if, if we decide to move this to the city council, and if we put down a year that's too light for. The city, and if we say we don't know what the number is, but we need to do it in five or seven and a half years. I suspect that'll be a holdup for getting this done. And I really feel like at the end of the day, ten years is realistic, I think a lot of lights turn over within ten years, so you're going to have to make a complaint within that ten-year period. It smoothes the path to getting it done, assuming we, we, we want to get it done, which I don't know, but if it is, then I just think that's a. It's an easier number to get by, I think it's also quite frankly more realistic, given what I've looked at. I think wherever it is. Again, it, as a, as an objective, I think it's great to do sooner, but I don't think it's. Realistic, and I don't think it's that impactful, we moved from seven and a half to ten. That's my two cents.
Did you get feedback from city maintenance on your hybrid, in other words, the building aspect of things, having a sooner timeline for that?
I didn't, I, that, that, yeah, that, I didn't, and so that, that would be. It involves, that's something I need to go work out really quickly, yeah.
I think it might be useful for us to consider the splitting between city and street lighting.
Yeah.
And I agree, street lighting, we have a lot more issues figuring out exactly what we own and what we don't. First, and obviously the cost potentially is much higher. And ten years, in that case, may make sense, but I think for city building, we should consider five years, pending some kind of an assessment from maintenance or. Around what, what it would take from a budget standpoint to do that within the, within the next five years. But I, I, you know, I think that's something we may, we may want to consider as a commission, that's.
Okay, so actually I think that's a good suggestion, and so I will address that with maintenance, okay? Yes?
So I guess I'm more of a fundamental question, a question of whether we're going to, you know, vote to recommend this to the city council, so. I'm trying to wrap my head around what the, you know, cost to this is, both in, to adopt it and implement it and enforce it. You know, aside from the, you know, a couple, couple tens of thousands of dollars maybe for consultant, it's really the staff time, and then I guess the capital expenditure to get the city in compliance, but. So for me, it's a little hard to say what the trade-off there is, right, if staff's doing. Developing and implementing and enforcing this, that means that's taken away from something else potentially, I don't know. Since it's in the building process, whether it becomes just an incremental lift, or it, because it involves upgrading city facilities, it then. Goes to a level of like, this is a real impact on city resource.
I think you are hitting a nail on the head for, like, when we're talking about like the public improvements, for sure. Because I can tell you just from having had to have upgraded some light standards in other jurisdictions, it's not as simple as, okay, you can just remove the fixture at the top, or. If you're lucky and it's a newer one, unfortunately, I can tell you most of our fixtures in the city are not newer ones, so it's not just kind of slapping on the shield. Which is kind of what you're able to do in some of the newer cities, you know, or the cities that have newer models that have already somewhat been deployed in the last. Ten, twenty years, ours are much older than that for the majority of those. And so the ones that we would end up seeing, you're not just sometimes just replacing, you know, if we're talking about poles, you're not just replacing the pole itself, you're sometimes going to have to be replacing. The actual footing, which then, you know, kind of somewhat doubles the cost, because you're talking about actual like labor and construction. We also have somewhat of a double-edged sword when we're talking about like the light poles and light standards that are in the public right-of-way. Like, so the ones, you know, specifically, I'm sure we can all attest when we're walking through town, there are certain ones where the light pole is just dab smack in the middle of the sidewalk. Because of ADA, like, prescriptive compliance, we're not going to be able to just replace the pole in kind, we would have to move it to be able to adhere to, that's one of the reasons why I would like the San Antonio. Complete Streets, the big grant that the city was awarded, a lot of it's going to get eaten up just by like reorientation and re, repositioning facilities such as like the poles. Because of that, so you're absolutely right, Commissioner Texler, there is that, what I would say, and I think everyone. Grapples with this is, for new construction, you definitely can kind of essentially set the, the tone of the new construction for the buildings, however. And the police chief kind of hit a nail on the head, the police department's not going to respond to these types of issues, but code enforcement leaves at five thirty every day, so I don't know who's going to enforce it. I can pretty much tell you the city not going to have in the near-term future funds for a dedicated staff person to work overnight in a city of our size. That wouldn't be assigned to, you know, the P D, so there are some. Components of it where it's how realistic is some of it going to end up being, and that's not say that there's not going to be somewhat of a benefit to some of it, like I said, the new construction will for sure. Be a component, I will say, you know, I used to be, you know, the planning manager of the county of Riverside. So land area-wise, I mean, I, I wouldn't probably be able to count how many Lowe's and Home Depots we had, so meaning like if we passed an ordinance saying things that were in the jurisdiction, they couldn't sell the appliance, well. Not many people are getting their, you know, lighting fixtures from Los Alamos Hardware, you know, they're ordering them in or going elsewhere for that, so. There's also then that component of the market where we're not able to control it and kind of curve people's kind of way that they, you know, accomplish the fixtures and deployment. So it's, there's kind of a lot to it, so it's, it is going to be something that the commission just has to kind of either, either grapple with if we do end up deploying it. But also then having a realistic expectation on what is going to be enforceable, again, new, new buildings, I think, can, a lot can be accomplished. But anything like retrofits or people kind of after the fact, kind of doing certain things, I just don't know. If those are going to have meaningful improvements, and I will say just from public infrastructure stuff, it's, it's an unfortunate thing when things are in the public right-of-way. It's, it's a trickle effect, it's one of the reasons why, like, our downtown parking plazas haven't been repaved in the last several years, because. We have no storm drain facilities in them, and the C three requirements is a five thousand square foot threshold. So as we all know, our, our parking plazas are quite large, so we can't do the repaving unless we're willing to then do the several thousands, they've got millions of dollars of stormwater improvements. And so it's the, the public infrastructure one is a really, really hard one, so I do just want to have a realistic expectation as. If you were to do it, I, I think the five years is, it's, it's ambitious. It's more of an aspirational goal, I would say, I don't think the city would be able to accomplish it.
We have ten years in there now, we were discussing.
Yeah, I'm just saying is like, ten years is I think maybe a little bit more realistic, is like, you know, as a, on a replacement schedule, is it's like every single time one stops working or becomes more of a. A cost just to constantly be repairing them, I think that's how the city would do it, because one thing is, is that with certain. Old infrastructure and fixtures, such as like public infrastructure, is at some point the cost burden to replace an old fixture, because you're trying to get your hands on the old. Kind of manufacturing of that fixture, you can't really get your hands on it readily anymore, so a lot of times it, it does end up being, okay, we're going to replace that, because we just can't really continue to keep on replacing the. The one light bulb or, you know, whatever it is, so I think, you know, as a, you know, a fundamental is, once it's time to replace, we don't just replace the. The, the head fixture, we replace everything on that kind of, kind of schedule.
So it sounds like your feedback is, it's not impossible to include city lighting in this, but it, it is unlikely five years is due goes up.
Yeah, I mean, I think the question is, street lighting is a big issue, we know that, right, so I think in terms of city buildings, the question is, is five years, in your opinion, is that doable? And maybe Tanya want to add something, I don't know.
Well, I, wouldn't it need to be in like a purchasing policy? Like, that's how we do stuff, there was a paper, recycling paper, and then there, there has to be an extra policy that. Provides staff more direction than the ordinance, so.
Yes, so I mean, you guys are kind of, you're on Civic Center property, which is the city's biggest standalone piece of property, continuously held together. A lot of our parks don't have significant amount of lighting anyways, so there's that big component, we would have probably already shifted like all of Main Street and State Street to solar. Lights, if we also didn't really want to have a very healthy tree canopy, you can't have solar, you know, lights that are, you know, impeded by tall mature trees. So there's that component too, where it's not as easy as some jurisdictions, you know, I think it's Dublin has like almost all of their new standards for light fixtures, because they. They don't really have many trees that are impeding that, so there's kind of that, there's just so many weird nuances to. It is, I wish it was, because we, Anthony Karnasekis, since he's the city manager, has explored it, and we put a couple in downtown, and. The couple that we found barely even provided any light, where it would have gotten even darker downtown, so there's a lot of things. I think in, Tanya's right, we'd have to put it in the purchasing policy for how we provide the prescriptive kind of purchasing requirements as well, so.
I think that the, you know, the, the things that are not attached to buildings, I agree with you wholeheartedly, when, when you have a light standard or a pole or something. Even in landscaping, it, it gets to be very expensive very quickly to redo those. So the only aspect that I was thinking of your idea is whether or not things that are attached to the building, you know, building sconces or, or whatever that. Light that each side of the entryway of a building or something like that, that's attached to the building, that's what I sort of thought, you know, is that reasonable? In a five-year timeframe from the city, and, and even that, maybe, maybe it's an aspiration to achieve that within the five-year rather than a must-do. But that's the question, whether or not it's, it, it's a reasonable step without putting burden on.
So my one question, and this is to not be objectionary, but. What building, other than the brand-new one, that I don't think the council would be supportive of making any modifications to, for at least ten years probably? Because the reason why I say that is there's, there are, there's one outdoor sconce on City Hall. Yeah, so that's just where I'm saying, is I think once this gets to the council or public comment. I mean, I have multiple P M L staff members that do not feel comfortable leaving the building when it's dark out, and that's because we have bushes that are this tall, and. Unfortunately, we have teenagers that like to hide behind them and scare people, and not even in the middle of the night, it's just, it gets duskier soon. So I'm just saying is, I think realistically, before we talk about kind of the, the high-level policy, which I think is a good one. But I think we also have to realize that like all of these buildings, other than this one on Civic Center was built in the fifties, so. You know, the Lacy Building, which is getting converted for additional city offices, there's one sconce on it as well, now I will say there are. Probably two handfuls of the old lighting standards in the original City Hall parking lot, that those could be replaced, but that is just a handful, I don't think that's a real big financial impediment. But again, that's, that's not really like a big lift for those ones particularly, I'd more so say I think we need to, kind of like what you were saying, Tom, is we don't really have a true inventory. And I think that's probably something that we would need before we start setting a policy, because I think that's going to inevitably be what the council expects of, and even if we don't have the, the. The inventory, I think it's, doesn't take much time to do like a windshield survey and take a couple pictures of, well, what is lit up at night other than like the community center, like taking that one off the table, it's. You know, because really the only reason why the internal courtyard area kind of gets a little bit of light is because of all the windows in the library, if those were not there, it would be pretty dark in between the courtyard.
I guess I'm struggling with, well, how is, you know, if our neighboring cities are putting in ordinances, and. I think Los Altos doesn't, I mean, it's, it has less lights, streetlights, et cetera, than most neighboring cities because of our rural. You know, aspiration, so if we don't want to commit, I mean, there is. We can, I mean, if we're saying that, you know, this is something that the police will enforce, that's a different thing, but if it's a, we would have the goal of within five years. On making sure that, you know, the building. And the lights on buildings comply with a certain standard that is, you know, acceptable based on what all the other cities are doing around us, both for. For birds and, and for the dark skies. How do we move forward to get to that without making a commitment that we will do it as a policy change, right? I understand that, you know, the tree, the. The big lampposts, et cetera, that we have, those, those can be. Addressed maybe separately, we had considered whether we would include those even in this ordinance. So if that's, that could be a separate thing that would have a longer timeline, or we could take that out, but if we're going to ask residences and we're going to ask, you know. You businesses in the, in the, in the area to, to do something, then the city should, should take the leadership and at least saying that we will aim to do this within that. Same timeframe, and if. We don't have to go about, you know. Taking a list and, you know, I don't know who would give ourselves a little thing for, for not complying, or however we, we do it, but you know, if you don't. Put that policy in place, how do we move forward?
Was Nick saying don't put it in place, or was he saying? I think Nick was just explaining the realities of upgrading city lights, I think, but, but so, so a couple things, so our neighboring cities have done this, they. I think, uh but, but so, so a couple things, so our neighboring cities have done this, they. Brisbane, and I think Cupertino well, made a ten year allowance for city compliance, if I'm not mistaken, not possibly, no, Brisbane did. For the reasons we're just discussing, and Los Altos, so for the reasons we're discussing. They allowed the city ten years just because of the budgetary impacts and because of uh the fact that. You know, their lights will change out over ten years and they'll comply over that ten years. That was one, so I think ten years, I think, makes sense for those reasons and might lessen the. Uh pushback from the council, uh the second is on enforcement and um. The, the police will not be involved, this will be something they just won't take a call on, it, it should be dealt with. Um in planning, for new buildings and planning and the building code. And when we talked to Stephanie in planning, she said this is something they're fully capable of taking, she's very familiar with it from, I think she was in Mountain View. Before or Sunnyville, uh so she was very familiar with this and said this is not. A problem to catch early in the building code for, for new buildings. Now, in terms of catching, uh enforcing compliance with existing lights, that's more of a neighborly thing. Uh you know, you, I think uh the neighbors will hopefully talk to each other first, and if not, then it'll get. Uh moved up to code enforcement, uh and there'll be pictures and documentation and. I think it's a fairly easy thing for someone to measure, uh whether there's too much light coming over the property line. Um and, and so, and the feedback we have from uh Sunnyvale. Cupertino is that this has not been an enforcement issue so far, they're all fairly young, but it has not. Caused a whole host of enforcement issues, it doesn't mean it won't here, uh but so far, the feedback from those cities has been. But it hasn't been a major enforcement issue, they don't have to add F T E. Um and it hasn't been any civil wars within those um cities about lights. Um so that, again, that's a feedback we've received, not that there won't be some hiccups, but uh at least those cities have. Indicated to us, those have not been. Significant or major issues.
They didn't have plans to enforce from the start, as we're proposing here?
No, they didn't, they, they had, they had very similar uh, it's similar compliance periods to what we're proposing.
Okay, I guess this goes into the residential, like, uh did they have residential enforcement in their plans?
For dark skies, yes.
Um for Los Altos Hills, Cupertino, or Spain. And if Sunnyville already has all their commercial building, now they're considering extending that to residential. They're, they're working with a consultant on that.
I mean, just, I think we can take our experience with the enforcement of the gas power leaf blower.
That's right, I was still thinking about that.
Which I think has gotten much, much better since the stepped up enforcement has come into play, but. I think, guess the question is, historically, for a long time, that was like. Day code enforcement had to catch the um person using the leaf blower, so. In this instance, because of the time shift with day versus night, it would have to be enforced by allowing homeowners or whoever to say. I'm going to document this light and you're gonna, you know, I'm gonna show you that it's um. Not within the code and then code enforcement would have to take that documentation to, to send a letter to the homeowner or whoever. So it could be enforced, it just, if that mechanism.
I think you do that from the beginning, that's the only way we're gonna be able to enforce it anyway. It's not like there will be someone going around the streets of Los Santos at eleven P M to see. So it, it has to be a community type enforcement, it can't be anything else, right?
Yeah, I think through the. Obviously, we also have public outreach that let people know why it's important, we're gonna, you know, right, we're gonna move into the direction.
Yeah, I wanna make a comment to that, so as Nick said, the enforcement is, would be still difficult and I don't know how, I don't know about this. How well we could be able to do a system where it's delayed and if, if anybody would wanna devote some to that, so. I guess what I am feeling like right now is we just need, with proposals, some clear idea of what that outreach could be, because. Based on what the public comment was that spurred this in the first place, it seems like to not have the residential component would be to not address. Why this came, came about.
So, so let's be clear, that there is absolutely a residential component on garden houses.
Yeah.
Uh so the lighting ordinance is, applies everywhere, to every segment, the only. Ordinance, or part of the ordinance where residential will be accepted is, by the way I've written it or intended it, is residential windows. So any architecture, there, no, no glass balconies, no glass, huge glass façades. Uh ideally, we have to figure out what tunneling flight paths, but no tunneling flight pass to the house. Um so everything is included, every segment is included, every sector except for residential windows, dark skies per safety. Does that make sense to you?
Well, sure, it makes sense to say it's all true, but it, it doesn't track with what I was hearing earlier, which made it sound like residential was excluded from. Some of the public note that was just gonna be on new building, new residential that was being applied.
There were two, two, there's two elements to the uh ordinance, one is basically thinking about it as a lighting ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh and, and then a bird safety slash window architectural ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh the only item we were talking about. Accepting were residential windows for bird safety, if that makes sense.
For new construction.
On new construction, exactly.
Just clarifying that there's. A lot of this applies to new construction and a lot of it applies to existing buildings similarly with reach codes. So if you just think about it like that, it might be a little easier.
So just maybe if we, um for the lighting ordinance.
Yes.
Getting out the consensus of what we want to move it forward, lighting part of it, are we? Be supporting? What um the ad hoc subcommittee is.
So, so to be clear, the ad hoc, yeah, good question, so the ad hoc was, committee was proposing, we push these both forward. But I suppose we can do it in two different parts, but we push the lighting ordinance forward and then a bird safety ordinance forward. Um I would rather, uh I, I guess that's up to you guys to tell me how you wanna move it forward or not.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah.
So I. Based on the two components you're talking about, um I believe the speaker um that's with the autobahn. Can it just, I, I don't necessarily think the city needs a consultant for the lighting component. Because we kinda know how lights function, you either want them on or you want them off, you wanna light that or you don't wanna light that. Um that's kind of just almost a common sense, kinda how it happens now. Birds and um migratory kind of wild pipe things like of that nature, yeah, we don't have any specialty in that, so. I'm just saying is, like I've talked about before, is do you wait like six extra months and then I get. Six more months worth of applications in for, you know. Five and six story buildings on El Camino Real, and I can't apply this because now they're vested under S V three thirty. Um or do you wanna do it all at once, because that's kind of how, you know, we've done it like with the Climate Action Plan, which is. A big policy document altogether, the implementing ones. Really sometimes should be bifurcated in order to that, it's the quick win, we can implement that and that's a little bit easier.
Yes, uh my own personal opinion is, um timing is somewhat of the essence here on these, we have no lighting ordinance, we have no bird safety ordinance. Um we have major, potentially major development happening within the city over the next year. Um I think we could. Uh pass this, assuming you agree, if, if, if you wanna move it forward, we can pass this, subject to getting a consultant review of the bird safety. Um items, uh and then we. Yeah, and, and there will be quite a bit of public outreach to one of the last comments. Xiaoping has put together a plan, I think the pushback we had was, we have, we wanted to start that earlier, but we have to. First decide to move this forward and then we can start the public outreach uh. Very, fairly robustly.
I would agree and, and support that, particularly for, for new construction, right? That seems like every delay we're missing, the opportunity to build in the right way. Um I still have a bit of unease and discomfort with the um resources. The city's gonna expend um mostly with the city lighting. To implement it, so I would be much more comfortable with a ten year timeframe. When I look at it and I think. You're gonna cut, potentially spend tens of thousands of dollars to retrofit one light versus that money being spent for some other. Further, for some other climate action goal, that might go a lot farther, so. I would be more conservative on that implementation timeframe for the.
That's a summarize, you should support, subject to a ten year allowance for the city lighting.
I mean, the question is, how complicated is, is, is it to really find out what, what are the lights that would not be compliant? And how much it would cost?
So I, I, what I can tell you is.
I'm talking about the bit. Street lights, which excluded ten years.
I, I don't know, I'm, I'm not part of the uh lighting group office, but I've talked to the city lighting a few times or the, the maintenance. Um first was, when this first came up, that was the first person that we just had to, about four months ago, I think. Uh maybe longer, and they, nothing has changed in the last four or five months in terms of their understanding of what. They control and what they own.
Well, for city buildings?
You know, I did, I, I, I. City buildings and, and street lighting and park lighting and parking lighting. Uh uh but actually, in my mind, the city light, the building lighting, I, I think this building complies with ours guys, I'm not. Totally sure, but I think it does, uh. Not, not intentionally, but it. Because it's a new building.
So. Close the question to council, so that they can weigh in on. On that, on the funding, if that's something we, maybe they have more insight to, if that's something we can. We should spend more money on in ten years or.
Well, I think what, uh I think. Uh but if we, I don't wanna ask city council a question before we vote on this, or should we just vote on this subject to certain?
Question, suggesting, but I don't know if that is a good suggestion in terms of.
I guess.
The input that we need to they guide us in stairs.
I, I think the input we're gonna need from council is to direct the city to do a city in, like, inventory.
Well, that's what you could ask, you could say, we don't know the impact of, the cost impact of this. Do, do the city, doesn't city council want the city to spend money to find out the answer to this? Something like that.
Make, one option is, I think this is a good option. I mean, we, we've all been discussing about five years versus ten years for the city lights, I mean, I, I don't want this to be an issue with the ordinance, I think. You know, I'll go along with ten years, but I think what I would like to do is actually, like you suggested, we need to find out. What we own and what we can do with these lights and how much it would cost to make them compliant. Not just within ten years, but maybe even earlier, I think, and that's, that's something we can tell the council, it's like, we don't know. And we need to do a proper study to find out what kind of lights we own. And what we can do with these lights and how much it's going to cost. And then, right now, we put a ten year compliance, but if the, if the study comes back and says. Well, it's not that much money, or we can do it in five years, or the council said we probably can do it in five years. I mean, it doesn't have to be in the ordinance, but we can all agree that it should be done earlier.
Yeah, and so maybe the way we put it is, the, the ordinance will have the tenure as we've written it, uh subject to our. Recommendation we do within five, subject to a study that we need to get done, type thing, right?
And that it's in line with budget expectation, though it's manageable from a budget standpoint, that is. And it's, it's up to the council to decide at the end whether that's the money they want.
The ten year, were you worried that also the ten years could be an impact as well? And that if it is an impact, that you would prefer it to go to something else, so that's how I understood what you were saying.
Yeah, it's a danger of ten years could be impactful.
I think you're really talking about is, you're talking about an ordinance recommendation and a policy recommendation for the council to consider. I don't think you're, so I didn't understand is that if this was the, the ten or the five year recommendation for city. Kind of essentially um compliance, that doesn't need to be in the ordinance, if the council wants to adopt the policy. Um to be able to essentially create that as their, you know, annual kind of budget practice to say. Um essentially in the C I P, they would structure it to say, okay, no, every year for the next ten years, we're gonna allocate. Seventy five, let's just say seventy five thousand dollars to that, um the reason why in just um to the point. Um of some of the commissioners is, you know, some of the other cities are doing some of these public improvements, but we do have to keep in mind is. Palo Alto being one of them, has a public utility that they own, they get to leverage it in a totally different way, just like how Silicon Valley Power. And Santa Clara, they, they have their own mechanism for it, and so when you own the utility, you can kinda leverage it totally differently. Um a lot of the cities that I will tell you, especially the ones that are inland of like East Bay. Um like the Dublin and the Pleasantons, how they've kind of created the, the immediate nexus where the council is able to say, oh yeah, I mean. Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a cost savings to us is, cause most of them are going for all solar. But again, that's the, that's the trade off is we want, um our redwood trees, which is great, but that's impacting the ability to generate the solar. Um so.
Do we understand that you were suggesting that maybe? Um the ordinance is what applies to businesses and residences. And then the policy is what applies to the city, so if the ordinance just covers. Our guidelines for, for, you know, new residential buildings and, or commercial buildings. Um that be, and with whatever timeline we propose, that's, that's the ordinance, and then the policy suggestion is separate. Or where we say we, we recommend that the city do this. And then that's up to the council to figure out how we budget it, if they approve.
Yeah, essentially, private um ordinance for private property, um policy for public property.
Makes sense to me.
So um. So maybe we uh vote on whether we pass this as written with the uh ability to back down to a. Policy as opposed to an ordinance for the city, uh if the city. Council.
I, I think the policy, ordinance would not apply to cities.
So we exclude the city from the policy, or the, from the ordinance tonight. That's who we need to vote on.
Enforce it, how does the city enforce it itself?
Uh, uh that's beyond me, uh how does the city enforce any ordinance on itself, right, um.
Okay, so.
That's kind of.
Kind of explain a little bit of the background is that, so technically, the city has the legal ability to exempt herself from any ordinance that the city has. So technically, you actually have a stronger argument to have the council adopt a policy that is setting what the council action will be in the future for their priorities.
Even if it's in the ordinance, there's going to need to be a policy to further explain what the ordinance is saying the city should do.
So I think, you know, we could vote to recommend, I mean. We're, we're just recommending this all, we're like, we're not adopting any of this, that's the city council, right?
Yeah.
So recommend adoption of the ordinances for, you know, residential and commercial for. For lighting and bird safety and. Um and then say we would recommend also a policy for city infrastructure, city buildings and city lighting. However, we recognize that there's not um sufficient data to understand what the impact of that will be, and so we would recommend. Gathering the data and then using that data to um help recommend the policy in the future.
Can we take a vote on whether you, who, who wants to take this to council first?
I, I think my understanding what we do is really looking at. Do we as a commission agree with the criteria? And part of the criteria now is, is it applies, but it's a policy to the city. So I think one of the things is, is, is this group giving you, giving authorization to proceed with that. The second part of it, which I think is important is, is I think we ought to perhaps give the subcommittee the ability to bifurcate. The bird from the, the bird safety from the, from the light safety, if it means. You know, we can schedule things more efficiently. In other words, uh the point that, that Nick was making, I don't think we wanna hold everything up. Because we don't have one piece, but can we as a group? Agree on the criteria and then authorize the subcommittee that if, when they get looking at the detail of this, they bifurcate the two. So that we can proceed on a timely basis, because I think everybody agrees, we don't want more large buildings. So that we can proceed on a timely basis, because I think everybody agrees, we don't want more large buildings to go up without a light.
Yeah, so I'll maybe we, uh, yeah, propose, you you give us authorization to move this forward. Uh, and the authorization to both make the city a policy, the city component a policy and to bifurcate. Dark sky versus, if necessary.
I guess the advantage of that would be that we wouldn't need to request or recommend consultant for the lights part.
No, I think the advantage of we could i- is that we get to move this forward as quickly as we can without coming back here. Yeah, yeah.
If we don't need to get a consultant, you know, set out the R F E whatever for that part, that can move forward and. You know, get implemented in whatever new buildings are coming in, but we may need a consultant. As Nick said, for the bird ordinance.
Need a lot of, we still have a lot of work to do to get this done, one is a consultant, one is, uh, there's outreach, but I think we're. Looking for just authorization to move this forward with the general, um, guidelines we've provided. But then you give us authorization to. Divide it, make it part of an ordinance. And, uh, without coming back to you for discussion, obviously, we update you and keep you in the loop, but maybe not have.
So part of the question, Tanya, I think I'm hearing you saying, is the next step? To go back to the council and say, yes, the environment administration recommends that we, um, you know, it, the next step is to develop.
If you want to move forward. With the ordinance, then we don't need to go back to council. If we don't want to move forward with the ordinance, then we would go back to council and report that we, that the commission does not want to move forward. If we want to move forward with the ordinance, then, um, the subcommittee would. Dive deeper into the next steps of, based off of the requirements that we are asking you to approve.
I think we've actually overcomplicated, cause all we're doing right now is. To the subcommittee is, yes, move ahead and develop the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly, yeah, yeah. But but this is the, uh, I don't think then you'll have input after this on that.
That's well, that was the the third element that you guys brought in is, um. Do you, you want it to come back to you, or are you giving, are you giving the subcommittee the blessing to move forward based on this conversation? Or do you want them to come back if they need further clarification on something very important?
Well, maybe. So the the question also is about the consultant, who's deciding on the consultant and when?
I mean, that. I don't even have budget for consulting, that's what I'm saying, no, no, so I have to work with Nick and Tanya to get that budget. You have to go to council?
No, we wouldn't.
You can do it, you can.
Yeah, we wouldn't. A consultant only goes for over a hundred thousand dollars, we would not.
Okay.
I I would not recommend the coun- the commission to move forward, but no ordinance at all, it's gonna cost more than six years.
Well, no, no, I'm just, if it's a few thousand dollars, you can.
Well, you don't have to go to council.
So in that case, I think we. When I'm comfortable saying, we should move forward with this, uh, ordinance or the. These priorities or goals as proposed by the subcommittee, and then it should go back to the subcommittee. To finalize the bird safety aspect of the ordinance. And flesh out the the lighting ordinance and, um, and develop a separate. Policy guideline for council for city buildings, for city lights.
So one more comment, which I don't think we. I was getting to it with the bird safety ordinance. For evidences on that we should have some clear guidelines, you talked about tunneling, which is what, um. Was suggested. So that seems to be the most important thing, and then make sure, so make sure that new houses don't have that. And then, but also have something specific, if I, if I recall, that's not too reflective or not too transparent. There always gonna have to be some way for.
Yeah, they're they're guidelines for what that is. Would be useful.
Yeah, or or to have, you know, if it is a second story, then how large the windows can be, whatever, some some guideline that's very specific that.
Yeah, but but realize, I think what we're voting on is the criteria I have in the deck, obviously, we'll we'll make those adjustments, clarify them, but I, we're not coming back. Commission at that point.
So if somebody wants to make, wanna make a motion, or.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that, I I think. I'm okay to to move forward with the criteria I have in there, to give the subcommittee the. Power, whatever, to.
We need to move forward with our public outreach, we need to.
Exactly, to go with public outreach, to work with a consultant, to finalize the the bird safety ordinance. And then develop a policy for city, for the city council, for the city lights. And then would be nice, when you've done all this, before it goes to council. If you could come back to the commission for final approval, that would be fantastic, that's what I would recommend we we do.
Um, is that would, is that possible? I mean, I I would only argue that that adds another month or so to the process, uh, maybe longer.
That is how we had, the commission had requested for us to do that, so that's how we've done it.
It's, you know, it's not necessarily a month, it's you finish your work one week before, two weeks before the next. Commission meeting, and I'm, it's not.
By the, by, what I'm thinking practically is, we we go out, we finalize this to the city staff, get the consultant, do the outreach. Then we have to come back, it it, come back to here one more time to present it, discuss it. If you want changes, then we've, uh, if we screwed it up and you want changes or major changes, then we've got to come back in another month. So I I think it's just, I would request we just. Move forward at this point. I think at the end of the day, it's gonna be up mostly to city staff to get this in the building code and in the.
Well, it's your outreach, it's the consultant, it's finalizing the the bird safety ordinance, it's developing that policy, I think. Well, I mean, we can do it, I mean, either way, right, but I think if you go back to the commission and the commission says, okay, yes, we all agree on that, you can move forward and go to council. Put you in a better position than just say, we the subcommittee developed everything with staff and.
Can we take a vote? Could be three votes, I think that'd be easier for me to understand as well and for verification. So could we first take a vote on who would like this to, who would, um, which commissioners would like this to be continued and move forward with? So please raise your hands, okay, so. Everyone is in agreement that this is gonna be continued on the work plan and moving forward, okay. Um, can we take a second vote on whether, uh, you want this to come back to the commission? Before it's finalized?
I would say, I would say come back to the commission while it's fully baked on your side.
So if you wanted to come back to the commission, raise your hand.
After, after we work with a consultant and public outreach.
What's the end of?
Before you go.
I would say it would be necessary if there's significant changes from the criteria's outline. If 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 it's commensurate with the criteria that's set forward, I don't think it needs to come back to the commission, because. If it comes back to the commission, then to get it onto the, onto the city council calendar, it's two months after we.
I I think the subcommittee's discretion.
Think we should authorize the subcommittee to move forward to the com- council. If they believe it's non substantial, yeah, if they choose to. But they can add to that, if they, if if you guys are making changes that you're not comfortable. Coming back, then you can come back, but that's at your discretion, that would be my view.
For approval or for taking help or or whatever, so.
Can I get a show again?
What are we voting for now?
Whether you trust the subcommittee, um, to move forward without coming back.
Yeah, that's fine, and and the subcommittee's questions to come back to the committee if needed.
And the third vote is, do you accept what the subcommittee has put forward today? To move forward, I guess, based on these requirements?
Oh, the criteria. We heard it on that already. First of all.
Well, we can do it again.
No, 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 the.
First vote was just like, do you want to keep working on it?
At all, are you, are you okay with these requirements to start to 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 move forward with?
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that, Tanya. You can short circuit us anytime when we get in a. Damage spiral.
It's too confusing, you need to.
As the subcommittee player and everything, everything, as a commissioner, okay.
Okay, well done. Okay, sorry that took so long, guys, uh, about a half hour longer than I wanted it to, so I apologize. Next item is a EV fair debrief. Uh, I think, uh. By Carl.
Thank you informally.
And kind of, I would like us to also look at this from like the high level of, of, do we want to continue this event, do do we want it to stay the same, do we want to expand it? Do we want to put the staff resources and time into that, it's more, um, what I'm hoping to understand.
Okay, um, I guess I can just speak to my experience from it, I I, you know, the substantial changes that we had were the e bike test ride. And more focus on home electrification, I I felt like home electrification in terms of H track presence and having induction cooktops. Presence were both positive, positively received and seemed to be well attended there. Um, e bike test ride, had some people seem to be coming just for that, um, although maybe. You know, if we if we could have thrown in more than maybe we're there more, you know. Uh, it it was definitely drawing people to the before that, um, so I do think that was a positive addition. You could argue, uh, I did get some comment about parking being very difficult to get to it, and because obviously we had less parking specifically there, so. You could entertain the thought of, do do, are you able to move it on to? Uh, city street path to to open up that tendance, or do you, should it move to a different, uh, facility in future iterations? Yeah, I, then we started to get into, uh, a more personal opinion, it sounds like we have, uh, very high, uh, EV adoption in terms of, uh. Personal vehicles, outside of bikes, just cars, uh, so, you know, I I think there is room for. How much space should become a greater focus in future iterations of this, I just. Having seen this that at least for the last quarter. That that could take on a greater focus in future years, but, um. That's like, that's my first feel, I don't know, cause I mean.
What was the attendance this year?
Uh, we didn't get a solid number from people are estimating, but it, you know, I would say it was probably lower, and we, you could hold that up to. Weather, you could hold that up to being the second year of the event, um, but, um. It seemed lower for quite a day, you know, at least the commission moved, we weren't having people constantly coming up where I feel like last time it was a constant flow, so.
Yeah, I I I was out of town, so I wasn't able to attend, but I, I heard the weather was bad, um. So that, I'm sure that impacted it. Um, so one thing we should think about, if we do do it again, should we push it back where we know rain will not be an issue? Just one issue.
This general timing was to be somewhat close to Earth Day or month, and so it's just inevitable in that time.
Last year was too hot.
We do get people that were hanging out there for.
And question, like EV adoption, you know, people want resources. Uh, who, what kind of contractor, the resource, the contract they can hire to install a charging system at their home? And I feel, uh, you know, since we're, we want to implement the cap, I think many people, you know, want these appliances, but they want. You know, a couple options they can call, and, you know, uh, we, you know, we could have. This kind of referral, you know, like a bay rent, I think, to to help our citizen, because people come to the table, they ask practical question. You know, where where do I hire them, you know?
Um, so kind of what you just said is exactly what, uh, myself and, um, Sally Meadows, uh. Told S V C E is that they kind of need to be, especially as someone that's our J P A that we pay into. Um, but also is, it's a big proponent, um, you know, of what they are offended to do. Um, is that they need to kind of create almost like the concierge type service, where it's like, oh, you can go to the S V C E website. And they, cause we can't recommend people, remember. J P A though, has totally different rules. So they can kind of create, uh, you know, a repository of people that will link together as, oh, this person's for heat pump, you know, this person's for solar. This person's for, you know, just the EV plug at your house, you know, all of these different things. Where people can kind of get like the known trusted, um, you know, contractors. And then my big thing was just to kind of further expand on that, as I also said, is then in that one stop shop is, oh, yeah, I'm looking for this. Okay, well, here's your list of this, but also here's your, here's your other column of all of the other applicable, um, rebates that are applicable right now. Um, and they know that, like, we're never gonna stay fully abreast of it, cause I mean, there's things that come up all the time for grants or rebates, you know, it's crazy. Um, so I mean, that's really what we've kind of already started talking about, but, um, just to kind of somewhat segue off of your comment.
So are you suggesting S V C E should be there with a booth and be prepared to answer those? They couldn't answer those questions, or they?
You know, we have residents coming by and ask this question, we could. Let them know that you could go to the S V C E. But I think we can anticipate people have this kind of question, so.
Did Baron, did they have a booth?
Baron, Baron has a booth too, right, yeah.
They didn't have a booth, it's fine, um, so.
They also have a list of contractors outside, which actually is a long. S V C E, pretty much a long list. Baron, they approve contractors, it's a very different kind of proposition. So, you know, you can, as a contractor, you can go to Baron and could say, I'd like to be approved as a Baron contractor. And they have to go through a process, S V C is just this, at least a bunch of contractors on their website. So I think there are two different ways of looking at it.
I was there for quite a bit of it, uh, and. The attendance was a little, was down in my opinion. I think that, uh, there is a high adoption EV rate, so I think perhaps. I think we've set a s- a role now that we've had two annual events, I think it would be good to continue an event. But I think I agree that maybe focusing more on building electrification. And balancing it out a little bit more would be helpful, and and I think. You're right, the way to get that is maybe working closer, like you're working with the the EV association or. Sort of partner with Silicon Valley Clean Energy and have them play a greater role in in helping set. What types of other booths should be there to complement their message? Along with with, uh, the city, so. I'm in favor of an event, I think a little bit lighter might, the weather might help. Um, and I think that probably expanding it so that it keeps some car portion, but you do more of a focus on, um, electrification issues. That'd be my my takeaway from.
I think we need to keep the EV portion for the time being, because even though the adoption is high in Los Altos, I think you get, we're all very early adopters. So I think the other ones are gonna be.
At some point, though, you only have so much floor space, so what I'm saying is, is you may. Give up some of the EV force, floor space if you can get a more robust.
Don't need.
Electrification section.
I I would be okay with that, increasing the electrific, building electrification portion and the transport, other E transportation. Equipment, because that's the other piece.
One thing I would somewhat recommend, and it's not something that needs to be decided, this is obviously just a debrief conversation, so it's just stuff that like, you know, can have micro conversations on. I mean, the people, a lot of salesmen are coming to events like this, or people that are already interested and already kind of considering. A lot of the big meaningful impact of the people that aren't even considering it, they don't know like anything. And it's all about like, uh, you know, suggestive and like cross marketing kind of com- components. I I personally, of all the, I I understand the game, it is what the commission wants to do, whether or, you know, it's, um. Kind of blend it, eliminate it, whatever it is, I do think though that we should try to find a way. With another city kind of event to somewhat capitalize on people that. Are not just coming just because, you know, of this one interest, cause you're getting a lot of people that are already interested. In that, um, kind of specific component, the big people, um, you know, that you you're gonna make a lot of meaningful impact and change is. The consumer habits that haven't even really touched it, other than, this is probably the most, like, kind of. What they think is like the most, you know, reusable energy, because they get to plug it in and it's, and it's not gas powered, I mean, like, you know, it's silly, but. You know, that's, that's how a lot of those people end up thinking about things when they just don't understand the bigger picture, so I think. That's really where you're gonna start grabbing a lot.
So I second that, and that, um, just first of all, as kind of debrief, as a, as a consumer. I thought it was very useful to have, uh, all the, um. You know, the cooktop. The other people who are there.
The other people who are there to tell you about, you know, installation. They have had some models of heat pumps and someone would teach them. It was really good to have that, so. I think it's been good to continue to have that, but maybe adding in some more informational. Aspect where one of these rooms or maybe has something where, you know, people can come in to learn and get resources and maybe be. See how, yes, convert people. There was someone there who, uh. Who worked with. Was a therapist who worked with, how do you talk to people? How, how do you talk to people about switching to EVs if they're really against it or, you know? Yeah, so things like that, you know, if I'm, I'm interested in, I have, what, what is the information that I could, you know, use to. Can make my friends without really, um. Um, bottom line, very useful event. I think we should keep it. We can keep evolving it based on, you know, what it feels each year. Maybe, um, you need a partner to help you with some of the heavy lift or. But I, I think it's great. You should keep doing it. Yes, please.
I do think it would be helpful and I don't know if there's a way to collect them. Who is coming to the event, cause you know, if we are preaching to the choir. Maybe we can use our resources in a better way. Um, and maybe next year we do, we go completely different and we have. Something in conjunction with the farmer's market where you will get those. And it, obviously it'd have to be scaled down, you're not gonna have a ton of EVs in the middle of the farmer's market. But you could take a spot in the parking plaza and do some electrification, do a little like mini one. And see, well, maybe you get more traction out of that, because you do have a lot more broad. Cross-section of people walking through.
Um, building on your idea Laura, that the first Friday night they had down at the state. Street market, they had some environmental displays along with the first Friday event. Now, the first Friday event was pretty, it was pretty chilly that night, so I don't think it was all that well attended, but I, walking around, I think I saw more people. There than where the musicians were playing on Main Street and things like that. I don't know. If you folks were there as well and who had the sense of that, but that was sort of my sense. So connecting it with another event is also a good idea and should be.
Branching out. Branching out.
Yeah.
I think he said branching out for a second.
We can do branch, branch, uh, electrify your branch.
Can I give my perspective? Um, so I think we all know. That planning event is very time intensive and luckily we have some great city. Uh, resident volunteers or some non-resident volunteers that are helping, that have been helping. But we've been planning this event in the most minimal way possible. And expanding the event would mean more staff time and more resources, so I do like. The idea of doing something maybe smaller and branching out into collaborating with, with another organization. Um, maybe who's taking the lead. I just don't think we have the capacity to plan the event in the way that we are. We want it to be, um, and. Also, um, do you, does the commission want my time to go to planning an event of that size? Is what I would like to understand.
So if we say yes, we want your time, we need to trade off.
And for one other suggestion, P C E. Is basically there, they've provided a grant. To set up community outreach efforts. And they, they partner at those events. And perhaps you can lean a little bit on Silicon Valley Clean Energy to really. Do a significant part of the lift. And as, as well as, I'm saying money as well as, as participation in the event.
Greater resources.
Yeah, because, um. I, I, and I don't want to simplify. I know it's a tremendous amount of effort and, and, um. Yeah, it, it is sort of, you go to one of these events and say, oh, you know. I put all this effort together and it looks like I just preached the choir, you know, that there were, there were just a handful of people that were. You were getting a new idea across to, so I like the idea of connecting it with something else. I like the idea of. Leaning on the resources of Silicon Valley Clean Energy and I'm, I'm. Speaking for myself, not for the, the commission, and maybe the commission wants to weigh in. Is if you can't get that type of, of assistance, then, then do we scale it back or, or? Throw our hands up and say, no, we don't want Tanya to spend that much.
And, and for example, Sunnyville, speaking of funds, that's also, do, do you want those resources to go to, to that as well, because? I think Sunnyville works with, um, Actara and another organization. And they're doing the EV ride-in drives, which is, a lot of people are saying, we want to move to EV, EV ride-in drives, which is even more intensive to plan. Um, it doesn't sound like they want to continue with the stationary, um, vehicles. And that requires insurance, and so, for example, Sunnyville pays about twenty thousand dollars for someone to plan their. Uh, ride and drive. Um, so that's something I just wanted to put out there.
Um, but a, a lot of moving parts here, I think, uh. Are you looking for a decision tonight or, or?
I started planning pretty early last year, so this takes like a whole year.
Yeah, yeah.
As it gets closer, it gets more and more.
Please, I just wanted somewhat kind of echo what Tanya is saying, just to the commission of, I'm sure everyone can understand from like having to plan other type of events is. When you're having to bring like, you know, let's say fifteen, twenty different vendors or people that are bringing their cars or something, it's. Sometimes like herding cats, cause it's like, no, no, this is the day and this is the time, we can't move it again, and that also has happened where we had to shift days and everything. Um, the one thing just too, and I, I don't think Tanya or I, um, were looking, it really is just meant to be like. A debrief and kind of discuss and maybe in the next month or two, you know, the commission can kind of. Regroup with maybe some thoughts about like how to start like the F Y twenty-four, twenty-five year for planning this like, but. When, when I look at it as like, you know, like, let's say, you know, um, the attendance, um, of like. Tanya or the E C or however we structure it at like what I would consider is like. Yeah, we have like our own micro kind of component, um, to like the farmer's market or first Friday type of a deal. But you're getting, you're probably getting access to people that didn't even know that we just had the second EV fair. Um, where you're getting a collective of hundreds, you know, if not more. Of people all that are all scheduled and we're just having to show up and participate and kind of show. You know, whatever information, you know, sharing, education kind of component, and that's huge, that's really successful, um, and kind of. Furthering, you know, kind of the, kind of like the mission of what the commission is, you know, trying to do, so. Um, I just, I think that's kind of where we were at, is kind of trying to say, hey, you know. It is a time intensive thing and we might only be getting a small portion of the people we, we could actually be really making meaningful impact for.
No, I think, I think all the new suggestions were great, uh, I guess one question I have, is it realistic to have a S V C E or somebody else? Do the heavy lifting on the organization? Is that realistic?
I'm, I'm not sure. It's the first time I'm hearing of the P C E grant, so I'd have to look into that.
That's sort of.
Yes, and so the organizations will often grant to a nonprofit that will, and they'll say. Part of this grant is you must do X, Y, Z public outreach and then. You know, Actara will partner with the city or whoever to, to, to do that, so I mean, yeah.
Yeah, P C E got a grant that three fifty Silicon Valley. Received the grant and by part of that grant, they had to put on so many exterior events and they're doing an event in San Mateo, Redwood City. Half Moon Bay and Actara is very active with three fifty Silicon Valley and, and helping put on these events. But I think this coming weekend, there's, uh, there's one in, uh, East Pa-, uh, East Palo Alto.
Oh, yeah.
East Palo Alto, that's sort of an, an Earth Day event, that's, that's one of them.
But, so I, I think to go forward maybe, um. One thing we should do in the electrification subcommittee is think about, because part of our. Goal is to think about how do we educate the community? So maybe we can also be starting to throw ideas around about. How that would tie in with what was formerly calling an EV showcase, right?
I think, you know, to keep it moving forward, that may be a, a. Sure, but it sounds like a good idea to me to, to, uh. We have a subcommittee there that can work with, with Tanya to try and flesh out what are the possibilities.
No, I think that's great. I think that was after with the subcommittee's board, and so if that's a recommendation, uh.
Well, I mean, I think, uh, we're gonna be running out of subcommittee very quickly.
That's the electrification, part of our building.
Oh, you mean okay, yeah. Sorry.
Maybe we should come back in a, in a couple, uh, couple months and. Talk about, once we've had a chance to, you know. Um, digest the, um, all the input that, you know, we got from.
I just, I just don't want to keep on tying stuff onto the electrification subcommittee.
Right.
Because, you know, we're not going to be able to come up with anything that's. We, we, we won't be able to address everything, right? There might be sections of this that's gonna be relevant for the EV.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it would feed into that, right? So it's not necessarily just, so we, we should come back to the topic of. What is our annual, if we're doing an annual thing during, you know, Earth Month? What does that look like going forward? I think we should continue to do something annually, is it? It feels like it gets, uh, the city, you know. Having some pride in what we're doing. Something where we can, we can around as to what it's for, the scale of it, whatever, that maybe we come back to it.
Yeah, so I think, uh. Yes, so we'll, we'll re-agendize it in a couple of months, but I do think if the, if the subcommittee wants to weigh on a quick. Plan for it and tell them about who we could leverage, I think the message is who are we gonna leverage to help do this? Uh, if we can, and that would be good.
Yeah, we kind of need to know soon, so we can. What do you think, Carl? Cause I don't know if we're gonna do another big event.
I was wondering if we start this past cycle.
I can't remember. It's all seemed like one whole time period.
Uh, so, uh.
Well, how about, it's like. A decision by. You know, August.
Is that, is that quick enough? If we, if we have a plan.
Maybe start planning in September for next year.
Ideally, the commission if the, can kind of regroup on by June at the June meeting, I think that would be.
Maybe regroup.
Yeah.
And then to come up with whether we want to scale it down and do something smaller and say no to a big event, or whether to. Do a big event and expand into like an arcade or something.
Yeah, but I, I think also I'd like to say that, um, originally the EV fair was not to have staff spend too much time on it. It sounds from what I'm hearing that you're spending a lot of time on it. And that, that was not the intent at the beginning, so I think we need to rethink the way we do it.
Yeah.
As we move forward, because we don't want you to do all the heavy work, right? So it's not, that was not the intent of the fair originally, is to partner with other organization. So that it's reasonably light for staff.
Yeah.
And I think that's, 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 in that, in that sense, I think we should. That's, that's the way we should be looking at it as you. Because it's not sustainable. She's, she's just by herself, right? It's unfortunate, but there is no, we don't have the right staffing for. For environment. So, you know, we need to prioritize. We need to minimize.
We leverage, leverage. There's organizations that want, you know, that have the agenda to do things like that, so.
So maybe the way, uh, we move forward on this is we, we put aside fifteen minutes on the next agenda, just to give more ideas on this and then close on it. The next meeting.
The agenda.
Yeah.
And Carl is still the liaison, so I think Carl can, you know, based on what we can discuss, maybe you can. Means move forward, protect the organization, see how we can move forward with.
One thing I want to mention is just in the process of planning the first one, we discovered. Tritha needed to be the ones to make the official communications that went out, you know, so there's certain pieces that based on. Procedures that, that like staff is just gonna have, there's, there's a carve-out that staff is going to do. Uh, regardless, so just want that to be clear.
If it's on city property, I mean, so, so is there any way to, okay, well, we'll, we'll come, we'll. What's my line? Uh, next item is the Lehigh update by Shao Ping. Um. Do you have a?
I don't know, it's a slide.
PowerPoint deck.
Okay, so I'll just, uh, give, uh, people an update, uh, what I've learned from this nicely high annual public meeting. Uh, which was held on March twenty-seventh. Uh, and it's hosted by, uh, uh, County Supervisor Joe Semidian. He actually has hosted this meeting a couple of times, uh, since he, uh, came back as a supervisor in. Two thousand fourteen. And, uh, these are, uh, all the attendees from, uh, neighboring cities. Uh, from our council, uh, Council Leanne and Finker were there. Uh, so as you can see, many, many CD, you know, they, uh, have your, either mayor, city manager or council. Uh, men or women, uh, or, uh, were there that day. And also represented from Josh Baker's office. Thanks.
Sorry, it's a little slow right now.
Oh, okay, it's a slow transition. Okay, so, um, uh, he has invited, uh, uh. Supervisor Joe Semidian, seven agencies, uh, to, uh, provide updates to public and, uh. Also there to answer people's question, the plan forward, what have they, uh, found thus far? And, uh, so the first agency reported, uh, is from Bay Area Air Quality. Um, that, uh, you know, the, right now, uh, uh, ongoing business is that they are trucking out. Uh, many of these catalog aggregates, uh, uh, so that's the active business, the cement making. Uh, was already shut down, uh, towards the end of, uh, two thousand twenty-two timeframe. So there's no more cement making, they're not selling those, but they still, uh, selling those well. That does create lots of truck traffic, uh, Stevens Creek Canyon and Puh Hill Expressway. Um, and, uh, so they are continuing to monitor those.
Image.
Traffic, um, um, pollution issues. Um, and there, there was some, uh, earlier that day, um. Discussion about the recommission plan, uh, options that, uh, are being considered in the submitted. Version right now, which is under review, uh, by County's Planning Commission. Um, is, uh, either they backfill with all the, um, you know, the dugouts, they dug out from the quarry. Um, uh, there are, uh, two issues, one is that there's not enough material for them to fill. Uh, that big hole, and second thing is that there are some concern in selenium level. Uh, that, uh, they have to think of a way how to, uh, do with that. Another, uh, proposal is to import the film materials from outside, which will involve. Uh, many, uh, truck loads of traffic each day and for a very long time. Um, so I think, um, you know, personally, I wouldn't want. To see the recommission plan eventually goes that way. Uh, I feel it doesn't do us any good, so, um, we, we can talk about a little bit more. Um, uh, la- later. And, uh, the second agency there, uh, is the Water Quality Control Board. Uh, that they have been, uh, performing testing, uh, year after year, I think for this past year.
Water quality has been acceptable.
And their, uh, main job is, uh, uh, you know, also. Water quality has been acceptable, and their, uh, main job is, uh, uh, you know, also. Monitor those ways, uh, solid waste discharge. Uh, they define those requirements to protect the nearby permanent creek and groundwater. Uh, the valley water, uh, they, uh, uh, took water samples. Uh, to measure the mercury arsenic corbyan levels and, um. Three to nine percent of these, they show some detection level, but they all below acceptance limit, so. They are considered okay. Next slide.
Give a few minutes.
Yeah, um, City Cupertino, uh, the city manager, uh, reported that they. You wanted the traffic pollution to the community and, um. I think the city council, there are two, uh, you know, representatives there since. The official minutes, uh, from this meeting are still being worked on, because there were many questions asked. And they wanted to provide the responses and all that, so I, you know, I, I, I feel some of those legal things probably would be better that. We have the official minutes. Uh, I think there are questions, you know, around the user permit and also some other things that were. Set up, you know, decades ago, um, that the county, the way how they are handled, manage those things right now. Um. So the planning, uh, the current reclamation plan submitted by Lehigh. It's about, at least about a year ago, and, uh, they're still under review because. There was a lack of information and not enough specification in that plan, so the planning, you know, had been making requests. Uh, but, um, their estimated cost in order to do the reclamation is gonna cost about seventy-seven million. Dollars according to that proposal and, uh, the, the area that they need to. Re- restore is about thirty-five hundred acres and the estimate is gonna take about forty years.
Who's gonna pay for that? Who's going to pay for that?
Um, Lehigh and the parent company, which is a Heidelberg Materials, and they are located in Irving, Texas. Um, just before all this agency reports, um. Joseph Midian sort of a recap what had happened in the last ten years, and I, I think that the most important thing is that. In two thousand, mid two thousand twenty-three, he has obtained a binding agreement from Heidelberg. That they will not, uh, do any more cement making and they will be. Uh, uh, devote resources, uh, to come up with a sound reclamation plan. But, um, Joe Semidian is going to be leaving this role this November and a new supervisor, Marguerite. Abbe Coca, she, uh, used to be mayor for Mountain View, uh, she's gonna be in that role. So, um, in my next slide, I, my last one. So, um, from what I have learned in the last few years, I, I feel, you know, supervisors and media have done a lot. I think he has got all this, um, agencies, state or federal, be monitoring their activities. Because there have been over two thousand violations in the last ten years, and they have come, they have come down. And also the succession of the cement, but the reclamation plan does require us to really, I think. You know, I, I feel what, you know, we as a commission also think of our city or, or. Community residents here, what we can do is really, uh, you know, as an advocate and, and continue to support their, their work and their effort. Uh, in this, and, uh, last November, I sort of dropped it up a letter just to. Uh, you know, really, I'd like our council, you know, to, uh, represent us all, uh, to really. Save them for their effort and, and then, uh, uh, be supportive of them, uh, you know, uh. Ongoing, you know, we know it's gonna be many years ahead of us. And, and we also know, you know, a lot of neighboring cities are really pitching in quite a bit too. And, um, and then, uh, we, uh, you know, at this commission, we continue to. Participate and, and, and be informed of, of what's happening there. I think so far, you know, I have been doing that and, and I'm hoping to get another person that who's willing to be on this. Um, and we, you know, like I said, the, the planning commission right now at, at the county is, uh. Is, uh, you know, really looking at the, uh, the plan and we, we want to stay informed, what's going on there. The kind of developments. I think, uh, you know, I mentioned about the tra- traffic and, um. Uh, you know, work our, our, continue working with the future supervisor. And, um, also, you know, prepare ourselves, we may need to allocate budgets for, uh, future issues. And, you know, we can also work with neighboring cities. I understand our council, uh, you know, they have probably two to three people. That they are, right, they are kind of watching this one as a, as a team, so.
Yes.
Have they communicate anything or?
Do they have someone liaising, liaising with that?
Um, yeah, I, I recall two years ago when, um, Council Fable was here and. I think she was relying on us to get information and get more in depth and then, yeah. I'm happy to be there, you know, so. But I, I like to kind of know, you know, their thinking, I feel like. You know, maybe in a future council meeting, you know, we can find out their thinking on this.
I recall, uh, Pete Daly saying. Giving some instructions at that, um, EC meeting we had before you wrote the letter. Do you recall the details? Um, that he, I think he said he supported it and he sent that.
That's true, yeah, yeah, he did.
To write the letter.
Right, so we have the letter, but it, it wasn't sent out.
I think the letter needs to be updated and the instruction from the commission was the letter to be updated and, um, reviewed. So I think that needs to happen, it needs to be, um, make sure that it's ready to go to council and then. For next steps on that, I would have to confer with the city clerk, you know, yeah, so I would.
I think it was distributed to everyone last November, and then when we. Uh, had a meeting, maybe in December or January, I think people, some of the members here have brought back their feedback to you. That's, that's the last thing I knew of.
The, what was decided was that the, the letter needed to be edited and that. You can move forward, we can move forward with.
Alright, so do you have those coming?
The exact, uh, process, if, if we decide we wanna get a letter from the council to, uh, in support, we just. Edit the letter, get it back to the commission, approve it. And move forward.
If you guys want it to come back, yes. The minor edits, um.
Okay.
Do you have the edits from? There was no, there was no edits, I think it was just a general, maybe the language needs to be cleaned up.
Okay, alright. I can get that in final shape, uh, and then we'll get it.
We will ask the city. With the next step, sorry, yeah.
I know we've talked about that, we've reviewed the letter, I remember seeing a draft and everything, but. Uh, I wish, I mean, it was in November, we're now in April, so. Things are moving, I'm not sure, I mean, the letter was a letter of support to thank them for what they've done and then. Show support for what they're doing next, uh, but is that what we still want in that letter now, or do we want something more specific?
I'll offer a couple of suggestions for consideration. One, I don't think the letter as proposed. Really achieves an obje- any objective that you want. I think Margaret Abicoca is just, uh. She's a candidate, I think there's a runoff or there's an election in November, isn't there? I don't think she was elected, she's just one of two. I really think that perhaps. And, and, and I've gone to all eight of Joe Semidians. Town hall meetings, yes, and, and I, I was actually, uh, had some interest bef- before on this, but there isn't. Much that the city can do. It's really in, in the county planning approving. The plans, and once the plans are approved, they take into consideration all the environmental things that we're talking about, truck trips and all that. In the plan that they approve. I think the thing that we can do as support, yes, the city wants to be somewhat. Informed about this process, and so perhaps the, the most significant thing that you can ask is, is Joseph Midian's successor. To continue his outreach on this, and if, if you wanna send a message to me. That's the message that you wanna send, the city wants to encourage the next supervisor to continue this outreach. Public. Gugging of the plans that are developed, and so I'm not in favor, I, I didn't understand what that letter was. At the last meeting, I provided some edits, but I didn't understand what it was. To me, and, and maybe Laura, I know this, has got a. Ahead on for these types of things, she thinks a little bit clearly, but to me, that should be probably one of the primary messages in the letter. There may be additional ones, but just to say that, um, you know, we wanna have direct input into the process. We're always gonna be providing our input to the, to, to the, uh, open space district. Or to the planning commission through probably the supervisor to get the message that Los Altos wants to, wants to communicate her.
So, um, just to be clear, what you're saying is the city of Los Altos can't really have an impact on the ultimate plan? Even though we're part of the county, uh.
Well, it can have, it, it, it can, it can express its, its opinion as part of the public, but. It's not gonna be, the plan isn't gonna come.
No, no, it's only, it's for any type of approval or, or, or.
Technical review.
So that was, that actually was what I think the next, that's what the outcome of that item was last time, was that. We ask the upcoming supervisor to continue the work, so can I suggest that, um, Commissioner Lu go back to. That recording and kind of relook at all that stuff and maybe update the letter? And then.
I think, no, I, I, I guess, uh, when I, when I had that letter, it was after a major. Meeting, huh, because the, these, these public meetings is once a year, but he actually had another meeting. Last fall, I think the reason when I was drafting that was really, because I don't know what our city has. Said to him and his team, and I feel it's important that we, uh, let him know that. Let he, he and his team know that and, and also, you know, we, I think some of this, since I. I don't know, uh, what kind of, uh, technical resources this planning commission they're working with. Uh, I think we as a community certainly can provide, uh, we can ask good questions. And, you know, they would need to provide proper responses, so it's a more an active engagement. Through such engagement, we will know what are the potential issue, what are the options that we're considering, you know. Uh, when they look at, uh, what has been submitted to them by Lehigh and what the, what the county and, you know, considering all our. Uh, feedback, what would they ultimately want to see in this reclamation plan? So I, I feel that's sort of my thinking, where we go, why, why do we want to be engaged? So, Tanya, I think it's not, I think you, you have some other questions before I, I forgot, sorry.
No, but I mean, um, I mean, goes back to, yeah, I, the letter came, the idea came. Following a meeting, a big meeting that showed support for what they was doing, but I don't think that's what we should be sending now, I think it should be something different. We passed that, I think, we're moving forward, right? So I think, yeah, I, I just, I'm, I'm struggling with this because. You know, I don't understand how much input we can have in this, um, but maybe we can say something, I mean. I just don't think it's just a letter of support, maybe it's a letter saying we want to have information, we want to continue to have the public meetings and we. Need to be formed and be able to react to what's being said, I think that's what it is.
And it says in the very last sentence that can, um, how can we support in the next steps? So that is the question, that, that question is posed in the letter. I mean, when they go for the reclamation plan, it's gonna have a whole period of, of comment. I think that's when we need to engage and make sure, um, that if we have an opportunity to provide. And, um, information to the city council saying, you, you know. We, looking at the reclamation plan and, and perhaps have some, um, comment, public comments that we would. Maybe recommend to the, to the council, but I, I feel like at this point, there's nothing really active to do.
Except, uh, maybe write the letter saying please continue this effort and please continue the public, uh.
You an undetermined person.
We don't know, but we, I, I mean, we can send a couple, we can resend the letter if we.
Laura's right, that, that, the, uh, right now, the, the. It's in Lehigh's court to send in an amended reclamation plan, and the amended reclamation plan, if they're on schedule. It, it's due the end of May, okay, and if they miss the end of May window, they have until. October or something to, to, to do something else without having to restart the whole process from. From the get-go, so there's gonna be an opportunity for public comment when the reclamation plan is in front of the planning commission for review. But frankly, I don't think anybody in this group or in the city has the expertise to review that. And, and maybe a few people might have the ability to, to review a very, very small segment. Of that, and so it really becomes that it's gonna be general type of comments, I think. That it, that it come out, um, and the reclamation plan, I'm sure is gonna be, you know. You know, thousands of pages.
So, um, one thing that I can, and I, so, just so everyone knows, when I used to work for the County Riverside. In the Transportation Land Management Agency, the, the planning division oversaw the Samara. Um, Administrator, which is the Surface Mining, um, Regulation Act. So I oversaw the staff geologist as well as the surface mining operating inspectors. Um, so fundamentally, and I'm already looking at the list, I've been kind of glancing at it during your discussion, is we can forward, um. You know, especially, I think, you know, Commissioner Lu has a very specific interest, um, as well as anybody else that would want it. Um, is to usually with anything that, that's this level of an environmental sensitivity or a big project. That would go for a major review, there is also like, it's beyond just like signing up for like the frequent, you know, like newsletter type of a deal. It's actually that you are a requesting party to be updated on any public release of information and documents. Even beyond just like the supervisor's town hall, it's very, very specific. Um, so we can provide that to you, his name is actually Rob Salisbury, he's the principal Samara, um, manager for the county of. Santa Clara is what I'm looking at, um, but then there's also the other individuals that provide this specific staff geologist as well as everyone else that's. Specifically designated for this reclamation, um, because, you know, when you look at everything that's posted online is, you know, Lehigh. Technically, his original reclamation plan was approved in eighty-five, their last amendment was in two thousand and twelve. Um, they are vested, um, uh, surface mine, um, so that comes with its own set of issues. Um, but that's why it's all going through this process. I think as of right now, I think, um, Dawn's correct, is that it's really kind of. The, whoever's gonna carry the torch. I think as of right now, I think, um, Dawn's correct is that it's really kind of the, whoever's gonna carry the torch, you know, forward, um, I think is kind of the person that you kinda need to kinda really start to try to advocate for. Because, and you'll know very quickly is if they're gonna, if they're gonna try to get something done, you know, like Dawn said, it's, you know, what? Less than two months now at this point, you know, a month and a half maybe, um, you'll know kind of, I think, a lot. Otherwise, it's gonna be unfortunately delayed even further and we'll go to the next supervisor at that point.
I think it was the, the end of, end of May, they had to do it and Semidian said they, they're gonna try and make that. And then, then they have so much a period for review and then it comes to public comment.
Yeah, it, it, so essentially, so anything under the SAMARA, um, which when I say that, it's the Surface Mining Act essentially. The, the act, it, it mirrors a lot of just like CEQA. So it's like, oh, because it, it bounces off of NEPA, which is the national level. So I mean, it really does kind of follow like, okay, whether or not it's a thirty day review period, forty-five or sixty day. There's really big kind of increments of time where it's a public disclosure document, um, for the public to be able to look at it and weigh in. Um, but I will say it is, yes, a very technical document, um, that honestly, there's no one in city staff that is, you know, we don't have an in-house geologist, um, at the city just because we're, you know, a very low flat city, so, um, yeah.
So my assessment is, is you're really relying on the technical expertise of the people doing the review, the county. And you're really trying to encourage your supervisor to keep their feet to the fire, so to speak, so that they're doing very diligently on it. Uh, and maybe that's part of the political process that you, you just kinda keep this in front of people. But I, for, for this committee or commission to try and do something technical.
Yes, so, uh, yeah, agreed. And, and I, I don't think that's what Xiaoping is suggesting, but I think it was more a letter of support. But maybe the right timing for the letter of support is when the new, when we know the next responsible party and then we send a letter of support in a request for continued open information. Um, and in the meantime, uh, I might attend one of those as well if anybody else wants to. Again, I, I really think this is important because I use Stevens Creek Road all the time. I use those open spaces all the time. Uh, I see those trucks coming down the freeway all the time. Um, so I'm, I'm very concerned about any, any reclamation project. I think we all should be, but.
Fill the hole and we're estimating seven hundred trucks a day for thirty years.
That's, that's what Xiaoping would say. I, I would not, I hope nobody would support that, but, um, I do think it makes sense for stay on top, express our support, uh, but I don't think any of us are saying let's be technical experts. So, um, so I think we'll wait, uh, until the next responsible party is there and then we will prepare a letter at that point. Thanks Xiaoping. Next topic. I think we'll use plastics.
No, no, three city, um.
Yes, three city.
Update, um, we, um. Not in a, uh, because she was busy with the, uh, with the EB fair. We didn't have a lot of time to, to meet with the, the city manager, et cetera, unless you had something more recently since we last talked on the eligibility aspect of it that we had talked about.
So as I, you know, Rashina and I have been going back and forth on eligibility. Um, so what I have asked is that more, um, background work to be done to go through the application and send the questions to staff on what we can, um, what we can support on. Um, and so part of the application is, is, you know, I don't know if anyone remembers, but there's the two dollar per capita that we have to be spending as a city. So Manny is, there's a, in the actual application, it's not just that question. It's like a set of like ten questions. So I've already sent that part of the application to Manny. And he's working, um, with staff to get those questions because that's not just data that we take or we have. Um, so it is requiring work for that. Um, and again, this is not part of the work plan. So a lot of staff time wasn't really supposed to be spent on it, but he is going to get those questions. So, um, that is kind of our update on, on the application. I don't know if you wanna give more about the event and the, and Gary.
Gary, um, very kindly offered, uh, a summer intern to help fill out the application once we deem we're eligible.
Make a bit comment.
Oh, yeah, so. This is an island.
So the application asks questions that tell us if we're eligible. So.
So as you, as you fill the application, you know, you, you, you know or not whether you.
The two dollars per, per capita was a question that we thought we weren't sure, right, that we needed.
Yes, and that's Manny's working on that.
Once we get information from Manny, we'll know if we're eligible and therefore it's worth it for the application. Right? So, um, at that point, um, Gary's offered, um, and in turn to help. We were also, the other requirement was that we do something for Arbor Day, which is April twenty-sixth. And, um, Gary's also been helping, maybe Gary can speak to it himself with, um, trying to see if we can get one of the trees that's been designated to be planted, the orchard. We planted that day or if we have something else, um, that we can work through. All right, Gary, take it on.
Just before Gary goes, just to be clear, so you're working with Manny through the application to see if we are eligible. It's okay with the current level of resources that it's taking right now to do that? Okay, and then assuming we are, then Gary will tell us if he has an intern, uh, available.
But the question is, do you need someone to fill the application? Or you're doing it, you're doing it while you're trying to answer the question?
Anyone can go online and look at the application and look at the question. So I, it, it, I can fill it out if someone gives me the answers to, like, there, there's a lot of questions on there. Or that, it's a very simple application. There's questions on there that ask you to go back to your ordinance and verify specifically in the ordinance what, um, it, what complies. So that can be done, you know, that, that would be done by Rashina. So that, so what I'm asking is that, and so, and then the parts that can't be answered by, um, the commission would be, yes, the, the two dollar per capita, which we're already working on.
And then, yeah, maybe the second thing is do something on, on Labor Day, on Arbor Day, sorry, Arbor Day. Yeah, any.
Public comment?
Public comment.
Thanks Rashina. Yeah, Gary Hadden, Los Altos, Virginia. The Green Town has a summer internship program. We've been doing it for five years. This year we have, uh, two projects. One is on creating some, uh, with the green, creating green change, creating, uh, some new recipes. Using vegan and, and vegetarian. The other project is the one that I'm gonna be the mentor on is the pre-city app, supporting the, the city on giving, uh, the pre-city application and, and getting us to be part of that project. There's three thousand five hundred cities that have done it, so it can be done. And I, what I see, of course, I wanna work with the commissioners, probably Rashina, uh, and maybe staff, but, but respect to your time. I would imagine that what they would do is maybe contact some of these three thousand five hundred cities and see, well, how, how has it worked out for you? What is, what have been the benefits to, uh, to your growing the urban canopy, for example? Or whatever else, what have, what have, what have they learned? So get some lessons back from, from, from these interns. And so the, the internship, we all have two. And it starts June tenth, that's for six weeks. Their commitment is ten hours a week, so it's sixty hours each. I think they can accomplish something at that time. Maybe help, help you fill out the application, but get, get some feedback from other cities. We might go and then have them report to the, to the commission at the end of the project. And maybe if that's a July commission.
So the application's not due until the end of the year for being a tree city for next year.
Now, as far as getting something done by this Arbor Day, I don't know.
Yeah, we'll have to see if we can.
Gabe has apparently, we, we planted, we bought three hundred trees we be in the city for, uh, the orchard. Capricorn trees. And this is a project that the history medium is very involved in, and, and with Jane Packer. Planted two hundred eighty-nine, eleven of them were held back in, in case, depending on how the library project goes, it may or may not get planted in that area. I was thinking maybe one of those could be planted with the mayor and the idea is that the mayor plants a tree on Arbor Day. For the viewers, turns out that Arbor Day itself is Friday, the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth of April.
And he's actually going to the state of the cities, giving a talk there at noon. So you either have to plant it early in the morning or late in the afternoon. Maybe it doesn't have to be on Arbor Day, so.
Or it doesn't have to be the mayor, it could be another council member or it could be.
Some recognition.
Yeah.
So it's probably better to shoot the next year on that one.
So the question is.
Saying we would be part of the, of the program if we get accepted, if we get the application in.
Do we have to, what it wasn't clear to me is do we have to celebrate Arbor Day before getting accepted?
The commitment to do that every year.
Well, just the commitment, so we don't have to, we don't have to do it before. When we sign the application, we just say we're gonna do it April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
That makes sense.
Sure, yeah. It'd be good if we could do something that's your just as a practice run or whatever.
I will probably be doing something this year, maybe late in the year when I hit number five hundred. Like the five hundred tree campaign, I'm up to four hundred and say we planted two last week at Gardner-Bullis Elementary. Yeah, Valley Oak and Coast Live native trees and we're, so we're up to four hundred and sixty-six. And I'll probably, I'll be in the four seventies before I wrap it up for this planting season, but next, uh, November, start again.
We, we can, we'll do a quick check-in, maybe early next week or late this week to see the possibility of doing something by next Friday.
Yeah, I would think you would need to do five in two days, five, five this Friday.
Yeah, yeah. So if, if we have, if we have.
No question.
And so, you know, dig a hole, put a tree in, no, sorry.
But I think it's more organizing people's time.
I want to have people show up.
Yeah, and, and the marketing of it, so I think it's on.
What I understand, it can be just something very simple and then you provide like a picture, like the city will provide the marketing and.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We'll do it, otherwise.
We had a, a tree planted two years ago at, uh, Shaw Park, actually at River Grove. Uh, I had both mayors, Los Altos Hills as well as Los Altos show up. Wasn't that difficult? They, they like to come to do that kind of thing.
There is a, you know, state of the city or whatever talk that day. I mean, might be very easy to do it after the state too.
So we'll leave that to you and the city can promote it. Yeah, yeah, so, so we'll touch base by Friday.
Excellent. I could just read from Arbor Day, the, the decision of this questionnaire, should you apply? The question is, does your community host an annual Arbor Day event to celebrate trees? So based on my past understanding and what I'm reading at the moment, it does seem like you, you need a historical.
Yeah.
Does? We have, we have two years ago, so.
Yeah, we did at once.
We'll see if we, otherwise we'll, we're not able to pull something together.
Yeah, it's just the next year. We can reach out to clarify.
Thank you Rashina. Now moving on to ad hoc committee reports, so we'll use plastics first. Who wants to give a quick update?
Uh, sure, uh, Dawn and I reviewed a document that Tanya sent us for information about, um, ordinance, uh, establishment. So we gave notes, uh, on that in terms of what we noticed could be refined, some of the suggestions for language and, um, trying to give any further updates on that progress of that.
Yes, I created a summary sheet of the ordinance requirements, um, and, uh, Dawn and Carl reviewed it. Very helpful input, input, appreciate it. And, um, that will be kind of like the main document we use for, um, public outreach, uh, business outreach. And so that is now in the hands of the PIO and the graphic designer and they're gonna kind of spruce it up and make it sort of an infographic. And, um, and then we'll move forward with, we're moving forward with the website and, um, kind of that timeline that we talked about last time. So just kind of working and leading on that process and Carl and Dawn have been supporting.
Just reminds that whole ad hoc subcommittee is YouTube? Okay. Excellent. Any questions? Or I guess we don't have questions on this.
What's next on this? Is it? Come back to VC or is it?
No, what's next is to con- continue creating the outreach materials. So the website, um, the one pager, uh, and then once those are all ready, um, then we would start scheduling the study sessions that we would put together. Um, and then host those, I think we would do one or two or, two or three, we'd have to talk about that. And then, um, conduct the public outreach campaign, get the feedback, um, any critical feedback and then update, create the ordinance, update it and then bring it back to the subcommittee, uh, the commission.
When, when you talk about public outreach, you talk about the intended audience of the ordinance, right? I'm guessing it's not a whole public outreach, it's just going to the business owners that would be impacted by the ordinance.
The business owners, the, the city, um, stakeholders, um, the holler and. Yeah, it's.
I mean, it's fully public, it's geared towards, what you're saying, yes, geared towards, uh, the, the angle of the market that would be impacted.
That's from them, you want the feedbacks.
Okay, excellent, uh. Building notification.
Is it gonna be at Pizza or at Starbucks? It's just funny, we always do, we're like, which commission are we gonna see today? The, the, which coffee shop are we going to?
We're gonna be meeting that update. Council meeting updates, uh, who was, were, quick updates, hopefully on, um, it's March, when was it?
March twenty-sixth.
You were March, March twelfth or did you attend that by any chance? Uh, okay.
Red check by my name.
Carl, you did attend?
I reviewed the twenty-sixth.
Okay, yeah.
Um, Nick already mentioned establishment of development fees, um, that, and yeah, there was a mention of engaging the Vermont Commission on those and getting our, uh, yeah, our take on those recommendations. There's a lot of discussion about wanting policy on commission communications that go out. Um, there was some discussion about, I, I, I believe this was referring to other commissions about surveys not looking like they were official and these sort of things. And so there's a lot of back and forth on that, so just, uh, be aware. And that, you might have seen an email that went around about social media use, that, that, that's spurned from, um, this meeting. Very tangentially related to us, but worth noting, Los Altos mission statement that was approved was the city's mission is to be a sustainable, vibrant and inclusive community in which, in which to live, work, visit and play. The other thing that already came up during this meeting, Berkeley rescinded their death ban. And so we don't need to make any changes to our existing code. And then just commission-related, uh, uh, commission, uh, uh, Councilman really brought up revisiting the travel policy, uh, in the effort to be fair to all regarding how some meetings, the travel meetings are automatically approved and the rest require careful approval. So that was the top line that I felt like was, uh, to environmental matters and.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you very much.
What's our travel budget?
Well, apparently we have the same policy there, so.
I attended last night. The recog- recognition last night for Carl and Sybil Kramer and the third gentleman. And was he also involved in that?
Yes.
And maybe Carl wants to show.
Well, yeah, this is, this is the race. Well, it's for the whole city. It's not even for the, to me, I just, I just haven't.
But, uh, Carl and Sybil and, and the other gentleman were recognized, uh, as part of, I guess, sort of an Earth Day type announcement. Really, there were not any, there weren't any public comments and, uh, the other items on the agenda were, um, had to do with Nick and, uh, AU ordinance updates to amend the, the AU, the AU, um. Ordinance so that it's in compliance with the state requirements. And so there was a long discussion on that that, that passed. Um, and then there was an equally long discussion on, uh, with Manny Hernandez and, uh, uh, the programs for tiny tots. And, uh, after a lot of back and forth and modifications and, and, uh, they set a plan forward for that. But I, it, it's nothing that really involves the, the Environmental Commission. And then the last item was they, they talked about a couple of California state bills, but they really were related to theft. You know, like porch, porch package theft and things like that, that the, the city, uh, the city council is looking into three bills. And I can give you the na- numbers if you want, but they have to do with, um, limits, value limits to make it a misdemeanor versus a, a, uh. What's next step of misdemeanor felony and how they can add it, be additive and then also porch, porch packages, how they apply into that. But there were three bills that, that, uh, council members were interested in supporting, uh, at least in their current form. Depends how they're amended down the road. And I didn't hear anything, and maybe Mick or Tanya can, uh, I didn't hear anything really in their potential future agenda items to add that, that. I didn't see anything there in that discussion that would be something related to the Environmental Commission.
No, um, and I, I didn't stay till the middle or the end of the meeting, but I got an executive debrief, um, today. And the, the complement actually agree upon anything, um, in regards to adding future agenda items. Um, it was just kind of a, a robust discussion about what could be, um, what's coming at the, so, um. Because Passover and the way that the dates fall, um, the next council meeting is not in two weeks, it's actually in three weeks. Um, so it's kind of a weird month. We're going to have a quick turnaround between meeting to meeting. Um, and what's trending to go to that meeting, based on the tentative agenda, is a proclamation for Bike Month for May. Um, adoption of the EDU ordinance, um, adopting a resolution that's, um, about the San Antonio project for, uh, the. The state routes to school. Essentially, it's, um, not anything specifically about the project, it's just something we have to do for, um, being able to use that grant. Um, a modification request to, uh, a previously approved project on First Street. Um, something to do with affordable housing units. Um, and then they're going to discuss, um, about senior care. The source wise, um, senior care, uh, item, and then the community center cafe, um, kind of which has been an ongoing conversation. And then potentially, um, special events and just looking at that, um, ordinance and how that's operating. That's, that's kind of what they're talking about. So nothing really that directly affects or impacts.
I did have a very brief, uh, discussion with Manny Hernandez and, and he did say that they, they are currently discussing scope on. Uh, a community center cafe with, uh, the parent, uh, or the, I wouldn't say low bidder, is that the right term? But the, the parent, uh, proposal that, that they made, so they're discussing scope now. And, and he felt that it was still, you know, a month or plus away before, you know, they hadn't know what the type of deal. That may be able to be.
So he will know that wood sliding doors right across the entry, um, in that area, that's always been planned to be like a small community kind of cafe of some sort. Um, and so that's kind of what they're kind of working through is the, the group that made a proposal to operate that.
So we can have meetings here and have a coffee at this time, not, not have to put this.
I'm not sure exactly what, what type of, uh, I don't know, if they're sandwiches, coffee, is there snow cones? Who knows? We'll see.
I think that's, that's all.
I just wanted to add, on the March twenty-sixth meeting, they talked about, um. Whether a commission wants to hold a, a special meeting. Did, did anyone recall that or, okay. So, um, if the commission wants to hold a special, special meeting of any type, um, even like a study session or what they normally call a town hall. Um, we, or, and or consult, uh, conduct a survey, we would have to, um, email council, um, with the survey. Um, and then they have to prove it before it gets released. I think I mentioned that in the email to, to you and Chao Ping. But, um, uh, and then.
So if you want to do the survey, we need to draft it, send it to council for approval before we can do it?
Usually that needs to be conducted through a contractor. So, um. I think in our case, since we don't have one, we, if we did, it's still unclear whether we can do a survey. Um, but I'm assuming that if we do do a so, survey, that's when we don't have a contractor, we would still need to run it by council.
It's the contents that we do with the council, right? It's, it's online, right? The survey would be online.
They just want to see the survey before it gets put out.
It's the contents. They want to know, you know, what kind of question we ask. For example, this.
This was the direction, actually, after our first survey we did for reach codes. Then we were told not to do surveys anymore. I mean, not just because of that, but it's been that way for a while. It's been that way for a while, that we're not supposed to do surveys because they're not, you know, um, you know, statistically valid and all that. So, yeah, it's, that's not new. That, that's been that way.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, I didn't go into this specifically, but I have a note here of Metta saying, no commission should be designing a survey. It should be the staff lead on the PIO. That's probably what I heard.
You guys are good in the clear, just want to let you know that, that's on the council's radar and they have, so if we do want to do a survey, it's like, like a more intensive and things come from staff.
Yeah, okay. Got it? Um, staff updates, nothing. Potential future agenda items? There are five on there. Does anybody want to add anything else? Uh, go ahead.
End question.
Yes.
The number one still need to be on there, based on, uh, what we talked about today, the.
I, I would say that, um, that now falls under the responsibility of the electrification subcommittee. So if they want to get more data, they can work on getting their data.
I think I was the one who originally brought it up and what we've heard is, is what I was looking to hear. So I can get worked on that.
And just as a commission knows, um, next week I'm actually attending, um, an energy law summit, um, in Oakland. Um, which is actually more geared towards all of the city attorneys. Specifically, I'm attending to be able to hopefully hear some insight about how people are dealing or planning on dealing with, um, reach codes. Um, and so that's next week. It's an all-day thing. So I can kind of give you guys a little bit of a high-level overview if there's anything noteworthy.
Next week you're going?
So at the next, uh, commission meeting, I can kind of give you something.
You can go to the subcommittee.
And then, uh, so my question, Tanya, on the other ones, uh. Especially Mission Trails, S V C E, Cal Water, who's reaching out to them or?
I already reached out to Mission Trails, begging, waiting a response. I have not had a chance to reach out to the other ones.
Okay. Is that, is that your, you'll take, uh, getting those, okay.
Can I ask, would, would it be one as an update from Cal Water? Just, I don't remember that one. Um.
We used to have periodic updates. I mean, this was, you know, in the, much more during drought years where they would talk about, you know, what the status of their, um.
Was it Cal Water or was it Valley Water though? Oh, okay. Yeah, just because Valley Water, I know, was doing the window stuff and kind of.
Yeah, yeah, no, this was about water usage and, um, um, drought ordinances and.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful, uh, you can narrow it down for me and so when they ask me, what do you want me to present on, I can kind of describe to them. So is that the same thing, you, water usage and?
That's what we had in the past. I'm not sure what the commission must be here.
There is an urgency to, to update.
I mean, I think Mission Trails makes sense, especially with the single East Plastics ordinance. Um, I would personally hold up off on S V C E until electrification committee. So committee starts to engage and figure out, maybe there's something specifically, specifically we want to hear from them.
So having them in advance of that wouldn't help you? You would rather, after you met a couple?
We, uh, maybe we need to get in touch with them first and then, um, discussion.
Yeah, I, I think we should meet and, and know there's something specific we're trying to say about.
Okay, so, uh, it sounds like continue with Mission Trails, hold on S V C E till the subcommittee gives more guidance and no urgency on Cal Water.
We can, we can just have to really just up Cal Water. So we can probably get someone more specific that can kind of give us a little bit more of a good overview than just their general PIO people. So.
Well, thank you very much. That was for me. Okay, just have a, a quick question. So, um, we used to have the presentations in the packet. And we don't have the presentations in the packet now. Would be useful to have those because. You know, we have a chance to review the presentation that was presented to us. So we're not kind of discovering something would be, I mean, that's a.
Yeah, for the public to, the meetings more.
Do, do the presentations so that we, in the PowerPoints we provided, do those get published in the next one as part of the minutes or no? No, so they're just not published at all?
Yeah, so you, you guys are going to want to have that, um, you're going to have to essentially work a solid week in advance at minimum to get, um, Tanya the, um, the slides. Um, that's, it's kind of, even staff has kind of gotten away from that a long time ago. That even got published for council at certain points. Um, but it's having to get a full slide deck kind of in advance of a meeting. Um.
And does the Brown Act allow us to get?